We'll bring the meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Flynn.
Present.
Councilmember Huffty. Councilmember Walter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Hasko.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. May we have a, we're gonna have a proclamation to start, so I will read the proclamation. One second. All right, we have a proclamation recognizing February 2025 as Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month was formally adopted in 1976 to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience. And whereas, the history of people of African heritage goes back tens of thousands of years, and includes some of the greatest and most advanced and innovative societies in the history of human experience. And whereas, African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States from the early days of the pioneers to our present day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade. And whereas, during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout society. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Judith Hasko, Mayor, hereby designate February 2025 as Black History Month in the town of Portola Valley. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African Americans, and encourage participation in educational events honoring the contributions of black Americans. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the Town Manager Report. I'll turn it over to Mark.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things for tonight. Thing one, tomorrow's my one month anniversary. And I wanted to tell you that I have truly enjoyed working with this council, council members, with our staff, and with the community leaders I've met. It's been energizing, so I thank you all for the time you've given on this. Also, I wanted to let people know that the housing element rezoning is coming your way in the next few months. So you'll be getting all of that. We just have, we have to do longer noticing under new state law. Twenty days instead of ten. So we're trying to coordinate it. We go to the Planning Commission, it'll come to here, but it's gonna be in this fiscal year. And I know there's a lot of interest in that. Also, I wanted to let the council and the public know that I have been receiving some colleague memos. If a colleague memo is in alignment with the council priority, I can just deal with it. I can put it on an agenda, I can do a number of things. If it's not exactly in alignment, then we'll look at where we put it into a council for action, whether it's three council members who want to proceed. So I do have three from Councilmember Flynn, two in the safety area, one on a process question. I have a couple from Vice Mayor Taylor, one in concert with Councilmember Huffty. I have one from Councilmember Walter, also on the safety issue. And they're all in, in motion, in movement. Things are happening around it. You'll see more of it as we come up to the last thing I wanted to alert the public. Council knows this pretty much, but I wanted to alert the public. We got two key meetings coming up. Public may be interested in listening to, watching, or being present for. On the 26th of February, we will be taking a look at our, where are we mid-year in our financial, with our mid-year budget? So it's an update for the mid-year. And it's a bellwether of how we're doing. And on the 12th of March, we're gonna do a study session beginning at six. We'll have the regular council meeting at seven, study session beginning at six on council priority updates and where we want to focus our priorities for the next number of months. So the study session gives us an opportunity where you don't have to make final decisions, but it gives us an opportunity to have more conversation rather than just following a strict business meeting. Both meetings are important. This matter is one that really needs good conversation. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is a time for oral communications. These are items that the public may comment on that are either not on the agenda or an observation on the Town Manager Report. So anyone in the schoolhouse with an oral communication? I'm not seeing anyone, so first we'll go to Ellen Bernatza.
Yeah, hi. Thanks for taking my, my call here. I just want to bring up something. Sixteen days ago, a large tra, a truck and a large trailer with a diesel generator was parked in front of my house and left running all day and all night for five days, twenty-four hours a day. And that night, the first night, workers worked on, out there till at least two o'clock in the morning with high-power lights and noise. And the generator noise and the exhaust, which comes directly to my house, ran all night. And on Tuesday morning, well, that was Monday when the first day, on Tuesday morning, I went down to the town offices to see what permits had been pulled to leave this huge generator running in front of my house. And I was told that there were no permits, but the person I spoke to at the town said that he would forward the question onto someone farther up the line. Later, I called the Sheriff's Department and a deputy came out and said that it was a responsibility of the town to address this complaint. So that afternoon, I also, along with coming in the office in the morning, I also sent in a request to the town's website. And here it is, sixteen days later, and I still have not received any response from anyone in town. The diesel generator ran twenty-four hours a day, every day and night for the next five days with a noise and exhaust traveling directly into my house, without a permit given and with a complaint placed both in person and online. Shouldn't someone from town have responded and checked out the complaint of this exhaust and the noise coming in? And I'd like to know, if you can please tell me what it would take to get a response to a problem like this in the future if neither coming in person to the town nor sending an online request receives any response at all? And I really would appreciate a response to this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mark, can I ask you to follow up on that outside the scope of this meeting?
Yes, I've now heard about it for the first time, and we will get on.
Can I also?
Hit the call-in.
I don't know if this is related, but it might be a PG&E matter.
It may, but I still want to look into it.
I have some background on it, too, I can share with you offline. All right, next is telephone number 7562.
Good evening. Mayor Hasko, I appreciate this. This is how you handle matters. You give it to the Town Manager. Thank you so much for your action. And what I would like to bring up is the Zoom meetings. What I have noticed, I'm not the only one, every committee is using Zoom, the work Zoom place. And some committees have more features than others. It would be nice if all committees have the same features. For instance, the Finance Committee can show everybody who's attending that meeting. Why cannot, we have asked for transparency and accountability. If they can do it, why cannot all the other ones do? BPTS still has some technical issues. I don't know if I can be trained to help with that. Let us know, we're all willing to collaborate and make this work. Then I also wanted to know, sometimes when we cannot hear people speak during committees or commission meetings, we can use the captive live. And it's pretty accurate. I've seen other ones that are not accurate. But this one for the workplace is pretty accurate. And I was wondering if you can look into, to see if that's a feature that we can have a recording of. It would be so much easier for the volunteers, but also for staff who are doing the minutes to, instead of going to YouTube, another app, you know, it would be nice if it's all in the one feature. And then my last thing was, we would like to have a uniform. It's not uniform, I'm looking for the right word. So when we make public comments, they used to be always attached to agenda and to the minutes. And lately, we have found out that sometimes they only appear in the minutes and agenda one, under the calendar, but not when we go to the committee or the commission or Town Council. So it would be nice if we can do one uniform, because it's very important. Our public comments are very important and should be archived together with the minutes and, and the agenda. So thank you very much for taking my comments, and thank you again for taking that action with the manager. That's great. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this point. So we can move on then. The next item is the Consent Agenda. And so we'll be looking at whether any members of the Town Council want to pull an item from the Consent Agenda. I should take public comment first. So are there any public comments on the Consent Agenda? I'm not seeing any, anyone raising their hand in the schoolhouse or online, so does any member of the Town Council wish to pull any item?
I'd like to pull 5C.
Okay, 5C is pulled. Anybody else? Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve items 5A and B.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Hasko.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, Craig, do you wanna go over 5C?
Sure. The only thing I wanted to call out was, we have a policy of chairs being two years, and we've sort of let it slip through COVID, and I think we should get back to enforcing it again. I think it was an important part of our policy. And we have chairs that have been doing it for more than two years. So I'm not suggesting that this year we do that, but I think next year we actually should say that the committees need to find new people. And, you know, the current chair could be a vice chair or something else. I mean, we're not expecting to leave the committee, but the idea is to get some rotation and make sure that we have sort of a robust volunteer structure. So I do think it's an important policy, and I think the council is responsible for enforcing it.
But you're willing to accept the roster? It's just, that's looking forward, how it gets implemented?
I just, I was, just wanted to sort of get the council's sense as to, we approve this? Are we okay approving people beyond their two-year term? And then, you know, sort of an acknowledgement that we should either remove the policy if we're not gonna follow it, or stick to the policy.
Any discussion? Rebecca, do you have any comment?
I do, but I'll let Helen go first.
Well, no, I, I wanna start down here. It's nothing personal, I just wanna, out of an organized approach.
I'm actually gonna pass, because I'd like it to come back around, because I need to collect my thoughts.
Okay. Mary?
It strikes me that people didn't know about this rule. At least the chairman. So just putting it out there, and we'll alert the committees to, that next time they, they need to do it slightly different.
I mean, it's been a longstanding policy.
Right, but I suspect that-
We're always very careful about it, so, I mean, but yeah.
I don't think all the committees realize that.
Okay. Craig, you have nothing else, right?
Um, two comments. My first is, my understanding is it was very challenging to get an emergency preparedness committee chair. And they, you know, so Chair Rains agreed to do it because people really asked him to do it. And so for the safety of the town, we might need to, some leniency at times. So that's the first comment. My second comment actually is Robert Young no longer lives in town, I was told. Is that accurate? For somewhat, so-
As he left town and therefore should not be on the roster, is that a question?
Right.
So the real, to answer your question, the realization that Robert Young was no longer in town was found after the rosters were created, but yes, Robert Young is no longer on the emergency preparedness committee.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I wasn't quite sure why you brought Chris up. I mean, Chris isn't one of the chairs that's been on for more than two years.
Again, I'm a baby council member, I'm brand new. My understanding is, he, I, I don't know how long he's been on. But they requested that he stay on, and so my assumption was he was on longer. I have no idea. So I'm just mentioning, in that case, I think it's lovely we have a chair there.
And we do, we do have the ability to make an exception. Like, the policy allows for exceptions, but they should be explicit.
Rebecca?
So I wanted to follow up on that same kind of issue that, I'm fine with the two-year rule as long as the policy continues to include the ability to have a chair continue longer than two years if they cannot find, if no one else in the committee is willing, and I know that's part of the policy. And then I, you know, given, having gone through the list of the committees, I'm a little concerned about quite a few of them. So I don't want to do anything to discourage volunteers. Taking on the chairmanship of a committee is, is a lot of work. So if someone's willing to do it another year and the other, other members of the committees don't have that bandwidth, then I wouldn't want to discourage them from doing that. I did want to get an update on our policies for the quorums, because there's certainly one committee that doesn't have adequate numbers. That's the BPTS. And their charter is for eleven members, and I think they only have five, so they're below quorum, just even if everybody shows up. So they, you know, in the past, I know sustainability had that problem, and we had to rewrite our charter to, you know, to have a maximum of fewer. So I think BPTS is gonna need to do that quickly, so that we can continue to have that, that very important committee. And then I think as a town, we need to put a big push on getting more people to join our committees, because they're all a little short, and they have a lot of vacancies, so I would want to get more people involved in the town. So whatever we can do would be great.
All right, and my own views here are, I recognize the value in encouraging turnover in the chairs. I think it's a robust function, and if committees can do that, they should. I do think, I do worry, some of the committees might not be able to find people willing to take on that additional responsibility very easily. And so I would want some leniency myself towards some of them. I think if they come back, have a discussion and explain what's going on, like, there shouldn't be a default just, okay, that's okay. I think we want to have an understanding. So I would propose that there be a burden on someone who's gonna be taking it on for the third-plus year for the committee to make a statement why there's nobody else willing to take that on. So at least we have a dialogue and an insight into the value of, of, or what the perceived value of that person continuing is. In terms of the quorum question, I guess I have a question on that. What is a quorum if you're supposed to have eleven but only have five?
Yeah. Yeah, so the Committee and Commission Handbook does define quorum for committees. It does not define it for commissions. And I actually believe that state law is, therefore, rules for the commissions. But for committees, it defines quorum as a majority in attendance of all committee members as listed on the committee roster.
So you do not need eleven?
You do not need, you do not need eleven, and I don't think they need to rewrite their charter either. Unless the charter says something different than is in the committee handbook, which we would need to look at.
And then the follow-on comment is, why, why do we need eleven? Like, should we revisit the membership numbers? But that's, to me, separate and apart from the quorum question, because they're, I want to make sure their actions are valid, right? And it sounds like the actions of this current committee would be valid.
So long as they have a majority of the folks on the roster, they have a quorum. So is that a new policy? Because I remember distinctly, as Sustainability Committee, we had to rewrite our charter because we didn't have enough members to create, to get quorum. I don't know when the last time the Committee and Commission Handbook was updated.
Okay.
And it needs to be updated again, but, but this is, you know, has been on the books for a few years at least that I've, that I've been here.
So coming around, do we want to accept the roster, I hear, less Rob Young? Because he's no longer in town, so, you know, we can either accept with less Rob Young, and then we- Yeah, you want more comments?
Just one more comment. Would it be worthwhile changing the policy to three years from two years, since we have the majority of our committees out of compliance with that? Or the chair?
I would like that to come back as an addendized item, once we have the committee handbook.
Yeah.
So a future consideration of that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can I?
If I can, just really quickly, we are currently working on the edit of the Committee and Commission Handbook, so we'll take that feedback and make sure that we explore that option.
Great, thank you.
So as long as we're discussing committees, and because we seem to be having a hard time staffing them and filling rosters, if that item is going to come back, I would suggest that we also consider some consolidation of committees because of, if we are having problems with filling rosters. And because of a small staff at the moment to be able to staff all of these committees, even though many of them are Town Manager committees.
Okay. Maybe Cory, you can take that up as you're going through the Town Handbook. I do want this to come back for any major changes like that to a wholesome council discussion rather than handled only in the committee. But we should address that. All right, so how do we wanna make a motion here?
Having to move to approve.
One more comment, sorry. We did have an applicant. I'm not sure, before we take a vote.
That will be coming at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're making a motion. Second, roll call.
Sorry, is this include removing Rob Young or not? I wanted to provide, oh, I wanted, I did want to just mention the membership qualifications real quickly. So for committees, your Committee and Commission Handbook says the council may, on a case-by-case basis, waive the town residency requirements for residents within the town's sphere of influence or the Portola Valley School District, depending on number of vacancies, number of applications, that kind of thing. You cannot waive it for the Planning Commission or for ASCC.
But Rob Young is no longer in the sphere of, yeah, so, so I think that's not an issue. So the motion is without Rob Young listed as a committee member. So-
Councilmember Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Huffty.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Hasko.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye. All right, our next item, moving on to the regular agenda, is the review of the town donation policy. Is there a staff report?
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The item brought before the council tonight is a draft of a proposed donation and gift acceptance policy. Over the past few months, several discussions have been held, both internally and publicly, about the town accepting donations from residents for public purposes, for example, resurfacing the courts, the trail maintenance. Currently, the town is only authorized to accept donations on behalf of PV Palooza. Historically, sixteen million of the twenty million dollar cost for the Town Center project was received through donations back in the early 2000s. These are just a couple of many examples of the residents' willingness to support the town. Yes, donations can be made to local government agencies for a public purpose without any direct benefit to the donor and are tax deductible according to the Internal Revenue Code. The proposed policy establishes the following. It formally documents the process for donation and gift acceptance and disseminating information, provides guidance and manages expectations for donors, authorizes the creation of a special revenue fund for donations received without a specific purpose, and establishes standards for town-elected officials and employees for accepting gifts. It is important to note that the donor's wishes will be honored should a donation or gift be received and accepted under this policy. It is also important to note that the proposed policy is consistent with similar policies adopted by other cities and towns throughout the state. Besides edits and comments on the draft, specific council direction is needed to determine the dollar threshold levels for donation acceptance. Does the council wish to accept all donations, no matter the amount, or can the town manager accept a donation up to a certain amount? After council direction is given, this item will return for formal adoption via resolution at a later date. This concludes my report, and I yield back to council for comments, questions, and direction.
Great, thank you. And this is going to be an important piece of our policy going forward. I understand there's people interested in making various donations, and this, I believe, is a, is the first instance that we've, as a town, have considered such a policy and other jurisdictions have it. So questions first, then we'll circle back for public comment and then discussion. So questions? Mary, I want to start with you.
I, I suppose specifically, I wondered why chairs and committees were not on your list of people who could accept donations up to a certain amount.
So edit, we can include?
Right, I mean, I, it was just a question whether, in other best, best practices, it was something that I, and I'm, and I'm not gonna do discussion. I was gonna say, what my question is. I did offer that I thought gratuitous was not a very good word in, under E, which is maybe nitpicking of words. But I thought gifts of appreciation might be more positive, I think, of our desires to give to employees. And declining donations, I, why, I think that my question was whether the manager's authority, whether it should be the council, declining donations should be the purview of council. But maybe that's not best practice.
Well, part of the review would be, is this meet the town's priorities and goals? Does it obligate the town for other issues? So there's gonna be a criteria that would be followed with the policy. And if it's not accepted in accordance, if it's accepted not in accordance with the policy, then we are, we've committed a foul.
And I suppose, last but not least, labor.
What do you mean?
Is labor something that one can, don't know.
Free labor?
You're talking about in-kind?
Yeah.
Well, it's anything of value. If you, if you place a value on it, then, yeah, we'll have to come up with a way to recognize that.
That would be it. Well, no more discussion. Craig?
See, I do have a couple of questions. Would it make sense for the signing authority of the director or the town manager to sort of be equal to the sort of donation acceptance authority, if you will? Would that be a sort of a reasonable approach? We've already sort of given, you know, the town manager and the directors the ability to spend that money, so it seems like accepting something at about that same amount feels roughly right to me. What do you think of that?
That's, again, this is open for discussion.
Sure.
You know, not making any recommendations. It's what the town council is comfortable with. Yes, the town manager does have a spending authority up to forty-five thousand. And, but then again, it's, how many donations are we gonna receive, and are they gonna be large dollars, small dollars? But the process will be, council's gonna be informed regardless. If they accept the donation, or if we accept the donation, there will be a report given to council when donations are received.
Right, yeah, we're gonna get a report on all the donations regardless of size. That, that part, I'm on board. It just felt to me like finding, you know, using some number like that, sort of a kind of a responsibility number. So that's why I was curious. Then there's nothing in here about donating to an existing fund. So I'm thinking like, say, the open space fund, for instance. Um, it sort of seems like it's going through departments. Whereas I'm wondering, could we have a separate policy that says, you know, if you're donating to a specific fund that has a defined purpose, that it doesn't need any approval, it just goes in because we've already approved the purpose of that fund.
Correct.
Whereas I understand the other thing where you're trying to prevent, like somebody said, oh, I want to donate money for you to paint something blue and then we got to maintain it blue or whatever.
Right.
I get that one. But for things that are, for funds that are already well defined, could we have a, a, basically, if you will, kind of a fast track where it doesn't require any approval, it just goes in?
So that's, that's covered under the acceptance of designated donations.
Okay. So maybe I.
If, if they say this is for open space.
Right.
It gets put into the open space fund.
But does it need town manager author, approval to do that? I guess that's what I was after.
Well, depends on the threshold. I mean, if somebody, if somebody gives us $100,000 for open space.
Right. So I'm suggesting, what if there was no approval needed? If, if the request was it to go directly into a fund that already had a purpose defined, that we just accepted it and put it in, so thank you and wrote the letter and.
I can, I can word that in the.
Okay. So that, that would be a possibility. Okay.
If the council's okay with it.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, then I was a little confused with the purpose of the trust fund. So what, what, what were you after with the trust fund?
Um, and this is coming from my nonprofit world. Sometimes we'll just get a donation with no purpose, just for the general.
Right. So why not put it in the general fund? Like, what, what, what's the trust fund? But I just didn't quite understand the purpose.
Well, the idea is to build up a balance in the fund and so that the interest would then, then be used, uh, to, to, uh, augment the general fund. But it's, if we put it in the general fund, I don't want it to get commingled.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Right. Because it's going to be a donation. It's not necessarily going to be tax revenue. It's not going to be charges for services.
Right.
It's going to be a contribution. This is a separate fund that's going to account for that. And, and then it's undesignedated. So there's no timeline associated with it. Because if we get put in the general fund, it's going to get spent immediately. And if that's what council wants, then we'll do that. Uh, but my intent is to build up a donation fund, a balance large enough that it earns interest, and then that interest would then come into the general fund on an annual basis.
I see. So you're not thinking that people are going to make donations that we're going to use? You're thinking they're making donations to a trust and we're going to build up a, basically an endowment is what, sounds like what you're talking about.
We would, yeah, we would want that flexibility, just in the conversations that we've had with some folks is, they've requested that.
Okay. So this is more like an endowment. That's the way I should think about that. And are we proposing that all donations that are undesignedated go into this trust fund? Or is there?
Well, it depends on the, I mean, if it's a large dollar or even it's a small dollar amount, we could probably go away and put it in the general fund.
Okay.
But if it's a large dollar amount, we would put it in the endowment.
Okay. Um, and then the last one was, I was wondering about potentially putting restrictions on the donations, like if they're targeted to something specific, that maybe they expire in five years. Um, and the reason I'm asking you about this, I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, right now, we actually have a fair amount of cash in the bank and yet we're struggling to pay our bills because we have a bunch of stuff locked up in special accounts. And I'm okay, I mean, it's re, you know, if you do it explicitly, it seems reasonable to have some special funds, or I mean, special, you know, special accounts, if you will. But I have some concern that if we start multiplying the number of those and then we're like, oh, we have 100,000 here and 100,000 there and, and, and we don't spend it on the purpose that it was donated, I'd like some mechanism for it not to be sort of locked up into that forever. So do you have thoughts for how we might build that in?
Well, we have funds that are for a specific purpose that we haven't spent hardly any money over the past two, three, four, five fiscal years, open space being one and.
Exactly. And, and I, I'm, I'm asking, you know.
But.
Could we prevent from doing more of that?
Fun. If the balance gets up to a certain level, the interest that gets generated goes into the general fund. So there's going to be some allocate, outlay of cash from this fund into the general fund on an annual basis. So we will be, we're just not touching the principal.
Okay. But what if we got money that was for a pro, you know, somebody said, oh, we, we love this project. This is our favorite project in town. And we're going to give you $100,000 for this project. And the project doesn't get done. But the money is, the only reason they gave it to us was to do this project. Well, what's going to happen then? Five years later, what's going to happen?
Five years, I, I, I would think the donor would be pretty upset that we hadn't spent the money. But part of that process is going to be during the acceptance is laying out all the terms that the donor wants. I mean, I don't think we as an institution can place terms on somebody's donation. It's whatever the donor's desire is for this money to be spent.
Well, we can. I mean, we can choose to accept it on terms that are acceptable to us.
Well, how, so it has to be acceptance of the donor. Because they're giving us the money.
Right. They're giving us the money, but I'm saying that we, at the end of the day, we will accept, we will take money on terms that we find acceptable.
Right. Yeah. And we will, we will honor the donor's terms as part of the process.
Well, we may or may not. That's, I mean, and that's what I'm trying to get at is, I'm kind of a little confused.
If I may, um, you're looking for a sunset clause where it becomes general purpose of so, at some point. And I think you're looking for flexibility because you want the donors to be enthusiastic. I'm just trying to figure out where the issues are here.
I mean, we can negotiate that with, saying, if, if the project doesn't come to fruition, what would you like us to do with the money? But ultimately, it's going to be up to the donor with how we use the money.
Well, let's, it's okay. I want to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. I wanted to find out what the, what the possibilities were. Yeah.
Helen?
So I actually had exactly the same questions. Do we need a return policy as well? Right? You know, I never want to see a clawback, right? But, um, it happens, right? Things happen, weird things happen.
I believe there's incentive to spend the money based on the, the wishes of the donor. Because if we don't spend it and we have to return it, we're going to have to return it with interest.
Okay, right.
So it's, it's, the incentive is going to be, let's spend the money as soon as we can. But if it's not for a designated purpose, then, then that's where we have the endowment fund, let that balance build up, and then we spend annually the interest. But if it's for a specific purpose and it aligns with town priorities and goals, then we're going to spend the money.
Um, that makes sense. Um, what about specific, um, buckets? For instance, if someone were to donate for speed bumps, that's been a big topic.
That's going to be a capital project.
But, but then you have the safety issue and evacuation routes and can fire trucks get over the speed bumps? So if they donate for the speed bumps and then we decide that it's not safe, what happens in that case?
We would make that determination before we accept the donation. And we would say, I'm sorry, we can't take the donation because of this issue.
Okay. That's my questions. Thank you.
Rebecca?
I have a few smaller process questions. Um, how do you envision this policy actually working in terms of the form, with the form be put online, that people would fill it out? Or would they be emailing in just saying, I'm interested in donating?
Yeah, it could be online or it could, they could come into town hall and kind of, I have this big donation, I want to talk to somebody about it. And that would be part of the process.
And then in terms of, um, a number of people in town commissioned committees have already talked about ideas that they would like to raise money for. So, um, how would it be coordinated in terms of, okay, I want to raise money for a speed bump, or I want to raise money to resurface the tennis courts? You know, would it, would it, would they be responsible for the appeal? Or would it, would the town be responsible for the appeal? Or?
Appeal.
The, the request for the donations?
Well, I mean, it, we, we think that we're going to be approached because we've had several folks already approached us. Um, that there is a lot of interest in, in this process. Um, but it would be, they would talk to the particular staff person that's responsible. So if it's, if it's for something for streets, they would talk to the town engineer or public work staff. If it's for, uh, the community hall, we can talk to the administrative staff. Um, I will be part of the process because, um, I got to determine where the funds are going to go. Um, but, you know, we have specific staff for specific purposes. And so if whatever purpose aligns with that, we will direct the person to that, particular staff person to hash out the details and then determine whether to accept the donation or not.
And then on that same idea, um, the, the current document says, you know, the appropriate town staff shall review every donation, just like you said. But is there any sense of timing for that to get back to the donor? Because obviously, like in the case of the speed bump, it's actually going to require quite a bit of research on the part of staff.
Yeah, correct. And it's going to depend upon the amount of research that needs to be done. I mean, if it's, if it's a legal issue or if it's, we have to determine long term, what obligations are going to be result, involved for, you know, like, if there's going to be ongoing maintenance or if there's going to be, you know, those factors will still need to be evaluated. And we'll come up with a timeline while we're discussing it with the donor.
And then how do we?
Expectations.
And how will the town kind of make a decision about timing, I mean, about staff time towards a donation? You know, I, my, my impression of the staff is pretty full of work. They don't have a lot of spare time. And so, you know, in the, in the best of purposes, a lot of people will want to donate, but it does require staff time to evaluate it, as you said. So I'm just kind of trying to understand how we navigate that.
I, I do anticipate that once this is adopted, it's, it's going to be release the hounds. And we're just going to be inundated with people wanting to do this. And so.
Excellent planning.
So it, it's, you know, so yes, it'll be case by case basis, first come, first served. We'll try and help, you know, but I mean, we, I mean, acknowledging the excitement and the passion residents have for the town. Um, yeah, we will please help us accommodate this process and, uh, but we will work with the donors.
Okay, great. And then, um, I was a little confused, um, between the acceptance at C, the, the town council, the, large donations, whatever we determine, must be accepted by town council. And then at the same time, if you go down to, um, I think, does, uh, distribution of donations, sort of at the same time, the town council then has to decide what we're going to be doing with the money. And it seems like those two should not really be in the same document. Because I'm, I'm envisioning, you know, based that you're talking about an endowment fund. So some of the undesignedated money would go into what you're calling an endowment fund, which I, yeah, I would assume that the money in the endowment fund would really be for town council at some point to make a determination of how we want that money spent if it's undesignedated. So it's, there's a timing issue that's kind of in the document that perhaps needs to be kind of fixed. Because I don't, I, I think we should just be able to accept the donation period to go to the fund. And then, you know, we won't possibly be in a position to decide how to spend the large donations if they're not designated. So.
Right. So one, one of the criterias I had listed was if, if an designation, under a certain dollar amount, just put it straight into the, the general fund. And if the council's okay with that, we can continue with that. Uh, but it's, if the dollar amount gets to a certain level where it's a sizable contribution, then it's, I don't feel comfortable just throwing it straight into the general fund when there's other options and we want to be a little more flexible with that. So that's why it was, the question was, what thresholds are, is the council going to be okay with? Counsel can say, if it's under $1,000, boom, straight into the general fund, no questions, whatever. If it's up to 10,000, 20,000, city manager, you know, then, and then above that amount, it's, if you want to really size it, because we want to give somebody publicity as well for a sizable donation to the town. And so that's where I, it's, that's where I see the council getting involved. They'll see, come to a council meeting, a presentation, and get, get recognized for a sizable donation to the town. So that's kind of where I was with, where, what threshold levels. I don't want to overcomplicate it. Um, I just want to simplify it as possible because I don't want to slow down folks who want to donate. Um, but I will, but also I don't want us to, commit us to something that we might not be able to uphold in the future.
And are you envisioning the designated donations to go initially into, into that fund while they sit there while we, you know, whatever the process happens to actually implement, whatever it is.
Right.
Until the money's needed.
Right. So if it's for a street project, we have a capital project fund for streets. So yes, the money can sit in there until that project gets going. Um, and it's the same with all the other funds as well. So.
So, so you wouldn't be opening a separate fund that would just say specifically for?
Not for designated.
Oh, so you would be put it into a current designated fund as opposed to leaving it? You wouldn't just put it into the, the, the whatever it's called, the Portola Valley Community Fund and have a designation?
Community fund is for undesignedated donations. If it's, if it's a designated donation, if it's for a general fund purpose, it'll go into the general fund. If it's for a capital project, it'll go into a capital project fund. If it's for open space, it'll go into the open space fund. If it's for affordable housing, it'll go into affordable housing fund.
So doesn't that co-mingle funds within a capital, the capital fund thing?
No, we have capital projects segregated by streets, by parks.
Oh, okay. All right. I think those are my questions. Thanks.
Great. Well, first, thanks for putting this together. It's, it's something we need to do. And I'm glad you were able to, uh, frame it up for us. I have some wording level things that are for a future time. I, I can share them with you. I think it's just clarifications. But, um, framing up the.
Nobody's name, you're sorry.
Oh, okay. No worries. Um, but, but, um, in terms of how to think about this, because we want several levers, I'm hearing concern about funds getting pulled into something and never pulled out. There is the, um, simplifying and making it streamlined so we can save staff time and, and get people lined up. Um, is a way to think about it that the more the fund and the more restricted the use, the more the council should be involved because we don't want to end up in a situation where there's a million dollars sitting for, you know, artwork in the town center that never gets purchased, for example. I'm just making up. Or, or how would you think about that differently? Because I want to make this as simple as possible, but if it ends up with funds being locked up for too long, um, that's, that's not good for anybody, even the donor. But I'm also hearing you want flexibility to kind of talk to a donor and say, what would move your dial? Like, would you be more willing if we promised to spend it in three years or five years? What would you be comfortable with if we didn't? Um, and I don't think today we can prescribe that. And just because we have a rule, last thing I wanted is a donor walking away saying, they're so unreasonable. So.
Right.
How, like, maybe you can just comment on how you think of those different levers.
Yeah, it, it, at some point, it's, it's, you know, if it's a, you know, the de minimis rule, it's, it's immaterial, you know, general fund. And it's going to get spent. Um, and ultimately, the donor is going to want us to spend the money.
Yeah.
And, but we have certain funds and certain purposes that if they goes there, it might sit there for a while and, uh, but if the undesignedated fund, the, the community fund gets to a balance at a certain point, if we have a project that needs funding, it's undesignedated, council can designate it for a specific purpose. And touch the principal. Uh, so I think I want to get.
That's the disposition piece as opposed to the acceptance piece.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. All right. Um, and in terms of order of magnitude, um, you've looked at other jurisdictions and what they've designated. Is there anything, any guidelines that you've learned in looking at those?
Uh, some had, it was under $1,000 and then it was $10,000, above $25,000. But given this community, um, there could be really sizable donations, um, that, um, you know, 25,000 might not be a concern. Um, so it's, but, you know, the town, town manager has $45,000 authority. So anything above that, we can say the council has to, um, approve that. And then you can also delegate the town manager. If the town manager can say, at this point, the. delegate the town manager. The town manager can say, at this point, the department head can just go ahead and accept it. But again, we would have to document it, report it to council, and where, where the, the fund was going to be situated.
And my last question is more determining whether it's consistent with the purposes of the town. It's pretty murky, and, and I get we need a guide, guideline. So the reason we would care about who makes that decision is if it gets us into, you know, hot water with interest groups with, you know, who knows? You know, A, it shouldn't be illegal. B, you know, taking too much of a political stance one way or the other. I can think of various areas of hot water we would want to.
Avoid.
Avoid. Did you see any similar policies that define those types of things?
The only, the only thing that kind of popped out was that there's not a quid pro quo here.
Yeah.
It's like, you're not, we're not going to give you $10,000 and the next thing you know, your permit's the next one up.
Yeah.
So it kind of avoids that, that scenario. But as far as, but again, part of the analysis is going to be ongoing. Is this, is there going to be a legal issue for the town? Is it going to be a maintenance issue that we may not be able to afford to upkeep? And it does say on the acceptance form that there's no guarantee that the town will maintain it or things like that.
Okay. But those were my questions. Now we can go to public comments in the schoolhouse. I think Betsy may have a comment.
How do you do? I am, I, I am perhaps a little bit ahead of the town on this issue, only in that I anticipated a more simple approach and a more slam dunk approach. And therefore, I will start by making a request and then tell you, reassure you that I think the request is quite doable, minus a policy. I Googled this weekend apropos of one donor to show shady trail, to give eminent reassurance that, oh, no, this is no problem whatsoever. So I Googled, and this town has taught me a whole lot about Googling. I've become very proficient. And I, I gave reassurance that, that if you direct a payment to the town, and it is for special purpose, it is noted on the check, and that you do not personally benefit from it, that it's legal in the state of California. And so I think that regardless of what happens tonight, I think that we're covered on shady trail. I wanted to put that out just to, to check my assumptions. And I guess actually, if we have enough head nodding around that, I don't need to say anything more. Thank you very much for sweating the details on the bigger scheme of things. I guess I will say one more thing, which is, I would kind of go for a targeted set and not make it too broad, because you're always going to get spurious stuff that is, you know, it's not worth solving all the problems today. Thank you.
Betsy, just a quick question on what you meant by that. A targeted set of what?
Oh, as, I, I believe that I may have just solved what problem I might now not have. So I was moving on to the problems that you're considering, anticipating this type of gift and that type of gift. I would keep it fairly, you know, corralled. Because as we get out there, you'll spend so much time, it will be as long as the committee handbook.
Thank you. Anyone else in the schoolhouse? I'm not seeing any hands here. I think first online is Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Years ago, when Jeremy Dennis was the town manager, there was an agendized item at pretty much all the committee and commission meetings in our town with him asking the public for donations to a town fund, not the COVID care fund. But recently, I had asked what happened to this money and was told that there was no money left in that account. So my questions are, does this mean that there was a donation policy in place and this updated one is replacing the previous one? Or perhaps there wasn't a previous policy? And my second question is, with the cloud surrounding the intent or regarding the lack of archived paperwork about the donation for Dorothy Ford Park, how will this new policy avoid similar issues of intent in the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Vatra.
Hi, I have two comments. One is kind of similar to what Rita said, but not in.
Uh-oh. We've lost you, Karen.
Oh, sorry. I do remember in the past Jeremy Dennis spending a lot of time with the committees, developing a program similar to this, but at a very basic level. And I think it might be worth, if you could find, I, I tried to find it online, I couldn't find it, or even the references to it, because it's not that easy to search all the P-diffs. But it was like back in 2019 or something. So it might be worth to see if there's any, you know, data back there. The second comment, is it, is it going to work if, I know there's a lot of interest on repainting the tennis courts to be pickleball only, a couple of them. And you're probably going to get a lot of donations. You're going to get, you know, 50, $100 for maybe 50 people. And I just wanted to make sure that this program, and it's not going to overwhelm the finance committee, finance group. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone 7562. Do you, we cannot hear you if you are talking.
Thank you, Caroline Britonga. And once again, we urge you to be transparent and pursue the accountability that we have asked you to promote. I found out this morning that there was a funding for the trails committee. So why did I not, why was I not notified? People in Portola Valley, when it's the common cause, we are very generous and we are very, we like to donate if it's for a good cause, but it has to be open for the public. And so we don't want side channels. Unfortunately, we had bad experiences with the general manager, Dennis, and, and then the second manager. So you have to build up trust. And hopefully you will be as transparent as possible, because yes, we're very generous and we like to donate, but it has, we have to know where it's going forward. So I hope Mary will, Mary Hafte, who used to be our town council liaison for VPCS, will inform you, there is an offer from a private donor for some trail expansion and saved bikes to route. This is up in Chi Line. And hopefully, we can have that accomplished. And that we don't, that it's a simple process. And I understand you have to safeguard liability. And like what I heard today with the conversation, there is a process where you can put your boundaries. But there's several people who want to donate for a special cause, and I hope you will understand that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll give it one more minute for anybody else who wants to put their hand up. And Caroline, okay, thank you. Good. I think we can bring it back to council for discussion. Craig, do you want to get us started?
Actually, Madam Mayor, can I?
Yeah, sure.
Interject?
Yes.
So Jeremy, the project was called PV Donates, and it did not get off the ground.
So no, no funds were received?
Yeah, there was no funds received.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So I'm struggling with this. I, I love the concept. I love the high concept. And I agree. I think we do have a generous community. So I, I definitely want to see us find a way through this. My concerns are, if we're, if, if people are asking to donate to existing funds, I get how that works. You know, I want to help with paving throughout the town. Great, it can go in the paving fund. But when it starts to be, I want to donate money so that my street gets paved. It's not technically my street, so it's not like my permit, but it's the next closest thing. I'm definitely benefiting because I live on that street. So that's starting to get weird. Or you start getting projects where, and I don't, I might be making this one up, but imagine that the tennis players and the pickleball players aren't seeing the same thing, and one group raises money to do something that the other group doesn't like. And, and so I'm, I guess I'm a little worried that once we start with funding projects, that those projects need to be pretty carefully vetted. And so I, I think I'm not comfortable with projects, no matter what the amount is, going through a director. Like, I think if we're going to say, we're going to re-stripe the tennis courts or something, and I'm just making this example up because I'm not smart enough to think of a better example. But I just, if we're going to do that, then I think we should define a project. It should come to the council. The council should approve the project. And then we can accept money into it, because then it's an existing fund that we've already agreed on that we're going to fund. And then I'm, I'm pretty easy on how money goes into that because we understand what it's for. The other thing, so that's, that's sort of on that piece. I'm encouraged in your trust fund that the trust fund is not truly an endowment that you're not going to spend. It's like, we'll try to build it up and we can use interest, but it, if we need to spend it, the council still has authority to spend it. I think that's the right model. I wouldn't want to see an endowment fund where money goes in there and the only thing we do is skim the interest and it stays there as another one of these special funds where we have tons of cash, but no access to the actual principal. And then when it comes to small donations, again, if they're for projects that we understand, that's great. But, you know, what happens if we have a project and striping, our estimate for striping is $75,000, and we get donations for $75,000. And then we stripe it, and it's $50,000. Like, and people made donations of $100 each. Like, I'm not interested in seeing staff try to figure out how to refund $25,000 worth of donations, $100 at a time. That just seems like crazy business to me. So I hope that when we work through this, and maybe on the smaller donations, you know, you donate and you go toward this project, but when it's done, whatever's left goes into the general fund or it goes into this trust fund. I'm, I'm open on that. And we leave the flexibility for, if you want to donate $250,000, then we can write a contract. And that contract can get into, you have to execute an X number of years. And if you don't, you give it back to us, or you can keep it or whatever. But, but then we're going to get the lawyers involved. And I would say on those kind of projects, that I expect them to be sort of full cost burden, which means they'd have to put money down for staff to go work on what it would involve. Because I'm not comfortable with the idea that staff's going to go invest 100 hours to figure this thing out. And then the donor says, well, I mean, now that I understand it better, I guess I'm not really interested. Like, that, that doesn't seem like a good model for us. So I guess I'd like to put some safeguards around that. And I think generally, big donors, their intents are honorable, and they, they want the right thing. And I think asking them to pay for staff time to evaluate a proposal, and if we need attorneys to basically look at this contract, that I, I think that needs to be something that gets paid for regardless of whether the donation gets made. So I think in, you know, basically, in summary, I'd like this to be simple. I'm sort of with Betsy on that. Like, I mean, in some ways, I, I hope we don't overthink this. I'm, I'm thinking like the shady trail. I'd love to see us say, great, bring a project forward, which is to repair the shady trail with an estimate. The council can go, that seems like a great project. And then money can flow into it. And that would be as complicated as it needs to be. But I do think that those projects probably need to come to the council. Whereas, like I said, for the other funds, a paving fund, an open space fund where they already exist, I'm pretty comfortable with money flowing in there. And, and the other council members, we can work on, you know, if there's some limits to that. I mean, I think Judith had a good idea too about, if we make these new projects, and this is what I like about bringing the council, if the narrower the constraints are on a new project, the more important is that we spend time reviewing it. Okay, thank you.
I would echo what council member Taylor said. But I would, you know, I would note, for instance, that Atherton tried to raise money for their town center and weren't unable to. They had looked at Portola Valley and saw that we did raise money for specifically. You know, for instance, I think right now, if we asked for money for an evacuation route, I think people would, I think we'd get some money for that, for instance, right? And the town currently does not have the funds to figure that one out. But I am worried because, you know, there is, the, the sense in town currently is, is of concern around the town and its finances. And I am worried by having just an open hand that people would be, you know, where's my money going? So I am concerned as well. I appreciate what you've done, your proposal. And I'm, I'm still not sure personally where I, where I am on the entire proposal. So, but I do think some sort of, you know, project-based donations potentially makes sense.
Helen, I have a question. If you could clarify, you said the open hand, people are concerned about finances. Was that to say people are, we've got to give them assurance? Or, I wasn't quite sure.
So this came up at the bicycle pedestrian committee this week, or last week, whenever that was. And I brought up that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. And publicly, people said, you know, they would not donate to this town at this point because of the financial situation with the town. And there was a lack of trust from the community around donations, without knowing where that money was going. Because we are in a definite, you know, we are in a structural deficit because of the share of contract, and, you know, for a variety of reasons. And we recognize that. But we do need to be aware that there is concerns with where, you know, our finances in town.
So that should inform a policy. We should be sensitive to that as we're developing. Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And could I just add one thing? So as I was struggling for an example, and I was using the poor one, I think the evacuation one is a much better one. So Tony, I'd ask you, when you think about this, to think about that. Because if people were, that's going to be an expensive project, and it's going to be a complicated project. It's, and it's not easy to figure out what the answer is. We could spend a lot of money before we figured out that it wasn't even viable. So I'd want, that, that would be the kind of example I'm worried about, that we, we, the town, could spend a lot of money on a project that ends up, we can't spend the money. And then we give it back, and but we spent the money. I mean, so as you think through the options, I think that would be a good one to sort of test against your policy and help us understand how that might work for an evacuation, particularly on Alpine Road is what I'm thinking.
Rebecca?
I think my fellow council members have brought up a lot of really great points. I want to quickly address the PV Donates, Jeremy Dennis's program, just because there seems to be a lot of misinformation out there. It, it never got to the point where the money was being asked for. There was no money collected. Instead, Jeremy went to every committee and asked what small projects the committee envisioned might be solved by the program. So when they came to sustainability, we had a few little suggestions. And likewise, we went to every committee to see if the, the idea was good, and if we actually had any small dollar projects that might fit into those criteria. So, so no money was ever raised. So I just want to be clear on that. So there's no missing money. I just want people to know that. Back to the policy, I really appreciate all the time that's been put into this. I guess some of my, you know, simplifying it, I think would be great. I think there's just a little bit, there's a little bit of complexity in terms of who can take the donation, who can't take it, where the money goes, you know, when you first get it. And to me, I, I kind of think in terms of the reporting back to the community about the, the fund and about the donations. As in all donations, the more people participate, the more money that comes in, the more energy you get around something, and then the more people trust the system and more, more people donate. So in my mind, any donation that comes in at all would initially go into the fund. So in my mind, any donation that comes in at all would initially go into the fund. And then, if it was designated for something, it would go back out of the fund into the designated fund. So that means at least you have a record of how much our, this donation policy is actually collecting. I, I don't quite understand why some of the money would be accepted by department head. That, that's confusing to me. So I don't even think that's necessarily necessary. I think it would just come to the town manager, and then, then the town manager would, would work with staff to make a decision about that. I'm very cognizant of, of Councilman Tay, Council, Councilmember Taylor's comments about staff time being used to evaluate it. So I would really want those criteria that you spoke about to be fleshed out pretty carefully, in terms of the amount of staff time, whether or not it fits with the town's priorities. I just want that fleshed out, and I subjective requirement, so it's a matter of checking a box that, yes, this is, this is a donation we can take in because it requires no staff time, or it requires X number of staff time, or we have to talk about a huge project that requires enormous staff time, then it definitely has to go through the council. Let's see. Again, reporting is important to me, how we get this information back out to the community about what, what's been donated, what's it for, and, and, and sort of whether or not it's been spent. And then, uh, let's see, I had something else I wanted to say. Oh, this is, so in the world of donation, I have a friend who was working for Stanford's Development Office, and she had some really interesting things to say about it. For smaller items, well, maybe not even smaller items, a lot of donors like to give money to a particular designated item. That, you know, they're excited about pickleball, they're excited about safety on their street, or, you know. So, so in those ideas for designated projects, you know, I think it comes through the town staff, and then it, maybe they come to, they would probably come to town council to approve that project, and then we go out to the public to collect the money. But there is something to be said for our community fund, for the people in town to invest in our town. Not so much for our, in our budget, but in just improving our town. Maybe because our budget's not under control yet, you know, maybe once it is, then, then people will sort of trust the system again. And so the idea of collecting undesigned money into our trust fund to be used for large projects, I think we need to keep that as an option. And then, once the money reaches a certain amount, then town council can then evaluate what that big project would be. And I would hope it would not be something to cover our structural deficit. I would hope it would be something beyond that. And as much as I'd love to be proved wrong, I, I feel like, you know, on the other hand, if we were just to ask for large donations for affordable housing, I don't think we would get the money. But if we were to ask for donations to improve Portola Valley in both safety and housing, then, you know, maybe that we would get donations for that. So I think we need to kind of stay open as to how the funds collects money. So I guess, you know, the bigger point of all this is just simplifying it. And then dealing with some of the criteria of staff time, that's something that really concerns me. So I guess those are my main, I mean, otherwise, I think, you know, we definitely need a program. So it's just a matter of working out some of these little practical ideas.
Mary?
Well, I, I want to thank you for doing this, and, and I think it's really good. Your background in not-for-profits is appreciated. And I, I think getting the smile back on people's faces when they offer to give money is really important, and I'd like that to be reflected in, in the, in the verbiage of the, of the contract and in the, in the form that they, they fill out, that people really know that we appreciate, that we appreciate it. I can sort of see that we could have a donate, a button, just like any other not-for-profit on the front page, and, and it would drop down, and you'd be able to pick your favorite topic. And we have, have that also ready to, ready to roll for people. There's a, a lot of frustration around, that's been around since the Frog Pond debacle started, that, or the Frog Pond success story began, that we, people wanted to give money and wanted to be able to care for it, and wanted to be able to, and, and did actually write checks and did actually collect money, and we never got a mechanism. So I'm really excited this is happening. And I'm sure that you can do this without my telling you how to do it. The only thing I saw was that I think your best solicitors for money are your committees. And I think there should be a sense that I gave to the Trails Committee because they need my support. I gave to Open Space because I know they know how to manage the open spaces. And so, and, and the chairman, I would say, they should be part of the, as much as the department. That would get rid of a lot of the work, because the, the committee chairs are aware of the council priorities. They, they're striving to fulfill, right from the beginning, they've started their, their effort on the basis of our priorities, and they should be able to screen. And that would save a ton of, of your time. And then the, the chair would come to you with a prepared document, and then you could work from there with the donor. But to me, that would fulfill a number of your, the other councilmembers' concerns, because it would relieve a lot of the staff time. And these are your, you're truly your trusted volunteers. These are the people who know the people in town and who would be able to make the ask when it needs to be asked. So I'm sure you can figure out how to put that in there. But because of the incredible amount of turnover, it is hard to say, oh, well, these are all gonna have to be vetted by the department head, when most people in town are not sure who the department heads are. So whereas they do know with very little inquiry who the chairman of the committee is. I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, you're getting a lot of input, and you should feel free to ask us to refine our concepts here. A, we have, from my perspective, we have to plan that we are going to have our financial ship righted in the near future. So I take the point about earning the public's trust. But if people are trying to donate to us, it means we're, we're doing something kind of right, and we have to plan on that being where we end up sometime in the near future. So with that assumption there, and all the cautionary notes about earning that trust recognized, I do think the part that could be used more is the committee member structure. And I'm, I think, I would suggest that you come up with a couple of categories of, these should be easy, these are potentially definitely in line with a town council priority and a project that's kind of defined. And then, these are not gonna benefit the donor, but they're taking policy positions like we should have all pickleball. Like, that might be a policy decision, but that somebody can drive the town policy doesn't seem the right way to go. So I think I want to see a screening structure that consults with the committees that are in charge of the relevant item, the, the subject matter, if it's over a certain amount, and doing something that's a, like, more of a policy or a question that should be discussed by either the town council or, or getting input from a committee. And it can be as simple as a consultation with the chair from my perspective. But it, that might help you, because I'm sure on a daily basis, you're not following what each committee has been discussing. I mean, I know you're aware at a certain level, but if, if Trails and Paths has been talking about Shady Trail recently, and it lines up really well, that's gonna mean that we're already in a relatively safe zone, that this is something that the town has in mind, and this is just pushing us over the line to be able to afford it versus breaking new ground on a, a use. I'd love to see an evacuation study, but that also entails, as Craig and others have pointed out, staff time, cycling time. So I think when, if you come up with a couple of buckets, like, this would require a lot of staff time before we do that. Does, does the council want to weigh in on that? And do we therefore want the donor to engage in a, a discussion of funding a study to, to see how that would work? But I, I want to see streamlined paths made available. If it's to the general fund and going into a trust fund, I don't know who would be donating to that, to be honest. But I, I think those should be much easier decisions than things that have not yet been addressed by a committee, might be brand-new subject matter for the town to consider. And then, that's when I would want the council or, or maybe a committee depending to be involved. So without overcomplicating it, can we create a couple of easy things versus this, this requires a few people to get together and discuss it from a few different angles? And we're not gonna solve 101 variations. We, we can't. We have to get started, and we have to bring it back and see if it's working, like, in a year, or, and I certainly agree with the principles of transparency and reporting. But that, to me, was baked into your expectation anyway. It's just a matter of getting that right.
Right.
So those are my comments. Did you have any? No. So.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
It almost sounded like you weren't, you didn't think the creation of the, the fund was necessary.
The trust fund?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I defer to you on that. I, I don't have a strong view on it. I think it makes sense, to be honest, if you think putting funds in and drawing on the interest, if we're in the lucky position to have that. That's you and the, you know, maybe a consultation with the chair of the finance committee from my perspective to, to make that suggestion. I think you're hearing, none of us want money to be tied up in an inaccessible way, but the mechanisms that you've already described to me of coming back to the council for designating from that fund for a specific use, all that makes logical sense to me.
And I, you know, just thinking while we're, we're discussing this, that, you know, if it is a project-based, obviously council-approved project. And once council approves a project, then we'll broadcast, we're accepting donations for this project. And council's already, here's the criteria, here's, here's the scope of the project, and, and this is, you know, what we're gonna be raising the money for.
Yeah, we can bake that into a process to Rebecca's point.
We can do it during the budget process, you know, on an annual basis, or it could be an ad hoc basis if, if somebody comes and says, like, Shady Trail.
Yeah.
And says, you know, we'll, we'll pay for it, and then we'll just, okay. But we'll still come to the council to approve the project in order for us to accept the funds vote.
Yeah, yeah, I think those cover a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing. I will beg the councils, I don't know, there's been a hand-up from Peter Littman for a while, and I don't honestly know if I missed it when it wasn't up. Okay.
Could I make another comment or question? Yeah. Could, I, I think there's some clarification needed in, within the documents about the, the, about if the money is collected, undesigned into the fund, the use of the, the investment interest. So I think that kind of needs to be specified, because we have that problem with all of our other funds. It's, it's in general, tends not to be specified, whether the money will then get pulled out for general fund or whether it goes back into, you know, whatever. A design, you know, if, even for the designated ones too. Some of them are just, it's not clear in their charters about whether or not the investment earnings go back into those funds. And then a corollary to that is, for the designated stuff, when we talk about the idea that money is raised, and if not enough money is raised for, to, to, to implement the project, this idea of having to give the money back with interest, to me, that definitely needs to be figured out. So, yeah.
Okay, so the way the funds are set up, and this is the Gatsby rules, it's whatever money, whatever interest generated by the, the funds in that fund, stay in that fund.
Okay.
This is why I'm putting it in this policy that we can use the interest for general fund.
Undesignated.
Yeah, we can basically take it from undesigned it and just put it in the general fund for general fund purposes. So it's just additional revenue to the general fund.
But I think that needs to be specified.
Right, and we'll specify that in the policy. But the other, I lost my train of thought.
Yeah, you're saying?
That's good.
Did, did we lose it, or? Okay.
Okay. So, so Tony, I just, I had one last comment, which was, you know, when a project proposal comes to the council, one of the things I would like to make sure we put on all of them is what the return policy is. Whatever, I mean, if it's a trail project and there's leftover money, and it goes in the trail fund, or it goes back to the donors, or whatever, but whenever a project's being proposed, I think we should have a return policy associated with it.
Right, and we could also have a question of, if the project doesn't come to fruition, do you want, would you like?
Would you be the return policy as well?
The town to keep the money, or would you like it to be returned?
Right.
I think we should give that option to the donor.
Yeah.
Okay. And also, so, one additional comment, because we were talking about large projects, even like the evacuation possibility, feasibility. I would break those kind of projects into small, you know, a feasibility study.
As opposed to the whole?
The whole thing, because, you know, that, so that if it's not feasible, right, kind of my idea too. Thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna wrap up on this item, Mary.
Well, we haven't really answered your 1X, 2X, 3X question, which I always like to fill in the blanks.
Hearing simplification.
Okay.
Come up with a simplified plan.
Okay, I was just gonna suggest that the 1X be the same for the department heads and the chairman of the committees. And as a way of, as a mechanism, so say you said $5,000, that the chairman could say, I see this as a perfect opportunity. I'll put it forward to the manager, and, but I, within, with my authority to be able to say, this is, this is, thank you. And I, the important, important word being there, being thank you.
Mary, while I agree with the involvement of the committees or a consultation with them, I do not think that the committee chairs are in the right position to evaluate the financial implications. So them being able to just say, yep, no problem. I think there's gotta be an involvement by the finance director and/or town manager in order to make sure we're locking, loading. But I agree with the consultation piece, that they should be able to say, I'll support it and I'll bring it forward.
Yeah, that's all.
Is that what you're looking for?
Thank you, thank you, I support it, I'll bring it forward.
Okay.
I understand what your limits are on this project. So they would do the, they would do the screening about, well, what would happen? What would you want to have happen if this didn't happen in five years? What, what would you want to have happen? They'd take some of that conversation, and it would be a friendly known face, and it would get, you know, the staffing, the consultants, all those fees pushed aside while, while they prepared the presentation for whoever would authorize it.
I, I appreciate that, but as a finance director, I would still want to have that conversation with the donor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's not instead of, I think it is to understand the context, maybe ask questions or something. It's better for a committee member, if it's in their jurisdiction, to have an understanding of what's going on and be a resource for the finance director on the subject matter. So, but I don't know that we have to legislate all this. To, to me, it would be, you know, the finance director should consult with applicable committees as needed to get context, and I certainly don't think we want to have a, a rule that they can't approach the committees. It's just, we need one person to be monitoring all of these opportunities and reporting them.
And I, and I think the differentiation is really whether a project's already kind of approved, you know, that a committee's made a request that, or that they want to improve Shady Trail, and it's kind of gone through the vetting, and then, then it's easy, I think, for a committee member to say, sure, this, you know, these are kind of some of the restrictions, we'd love your money. we'd love your money.
It could also be an opportunity for that project.
To get filtered out, yes.
If there's a lot of support.
Versus a wish list from a committee, you know, every committee has enormous wish lists and I wouldn't want them to promise the donor that something's going to get done when it hasn't even been vetted, so I think.
The very good example of, for me of this, is this Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Safety Committee's desire to improve skyline safety and the fact that they've, they've actually found a goat donor who's presented several times to our council, not to our, to our committee, the BCPT, and also has talked to Woodside and also has talked to Caltrans and so forth and hasn't been, and we've made a colleague's memo and we haven't been able to generate a mechanism even to evaluate it yet. So I just, I mean, there, and I think we had it approved at a council level, that we would, that we authorized a subcommittee of the town council to work on it, but we didn't have anywhere to go with it. So I'm hoping you can, and it's the ultimate, the ultimate situation where there's huge risk and a huge need for staff support.
Mary.
So we never, that's an example, just let me finish this sentence.
Yeah, sure.
The, we, we'd have that kind of situation nipped in the bug before it causes a lot of consternation on both the council, the town and the committees.
Yeah, I want to make sure we got him what he needs, it's coming back, but maybe you can fill in your experience there offline.
He knows about it.
All right, then, then we're all done.
Can I speak to the minutes? Can we just?
Yes, feel free, anybody, we can go around and poll on the limits.
This is great. I mean, my view on this is keep it simple. If there's a project that the council's approved, I don't think it needs anybody's approval. You just put the money in that project. And if there's an existing fund that we already have, you just put the money in there, end of story. Like, then we don't have to go through any of department heads, you know, committee chairs. I mean, I expect the committee chairs to bring these projects forward. That's the way they'd get the project funded, but we would ultimately approve the project and once it's done, money would flow into it and that would have all the right sort of safeguards on it when we approve the project.
Currently, we have no approved budgets.
Understand, but I'm thinking like Shady Trail would be.
When we have them, let's plan on it.
They don't want to put the cart in front of the horse here.
But I think Shady Trail's a great example.
Yeah.
So that would be an easy one, I think, that would, you know, it would come up through the Trails Committee, it would come to the council, we would say, great, this seems like a great idea, and then you would have authorization, once we approved it, to take whatever, whoever wanted to put money in, they'd put it into the Shady Trail Fund.
Which we already have.
Great, so, but that's my point is that, I think that gets rid of, you know, having to come between here and here kind of of levels, which is if the project's approved, you put money into it.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I think we're ready to move on at this point. Thank you, Tony, and we'll look forward to that coming forward.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the consideration of authorizing the interim town manager to execute a contract with Baker Tilly or Wendy Brown and Creative Partners for executive search services for the town manager recruitment process. Corey, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. Good evening, mayor and town council. Given the town currently has an interim town manager, the town council must proceed to recruit a new ongoing town manager. In response to the pending search, the staff issued an RFP, which is also known as a request for proposals for an executive search firm to lead the search process for the town manager, which will be in collaboration with the town council. At our January 22 meeting, the town council selected a subcommittee of Mayor Haskell and Councilmember Flynn to interview and perform reference checks on the firms and the associates as necessary. We received proposals from two firms, Baker Tilly and Wendy Brown and Creative Partners, also known as WBCP. On February 3, the subcommittee interviewed the firms and later performed follow-up reference checks and one follow-up interview. I would like to now give the floor to Mayor Haskell and Councilmember Flynn for their thoughts and I will pull up your presentation.
Thank you. We have a couple of slides to go over our process and recommendation. So let's give it a minute. All right, great, next slide. Okay, so Rebecca and I were appointed by the town council to serve in the subcommittee to select the recruiting firm. Corey and her team did the RFP process, which enabled us to interview two firms. They were highly interested in working with Portola Valley to identify a permanent town manager. So there is Wendy Brown and on the one hand, and Baker Tilly on the other. Both firms have a strong reputation, are well qualified and they've each already worked with the town in different capacities. Notably, they were not involved in the search for the prior two town managers, that was a different firm. Next. All right, so what we did, reviewed the long proposals, which you have in the packet. We developed standard questions and held interviews with the potential team members within each firm. That was very helpful, they came to the table with the specific individuals that they were proposing we work with. We also checked references for each firm. Both firms had very positive references, working with towns with various different similarities. I mean, there's no, we're pretty unique, but they either work with small towns or towns that have a lot of community involvement. And then we checked with the staff on their experiences with each firm, given that our staff has experience from other jurisdictions as well as doing searches within our town. Next. All right, so our recommendation, based on all of that, is that we recommend engaging Wendy Brown. We will note though, we had confidence both firms would provide great support for our search for a permanent town manager. In particular, they presented more experienced leading searches in California and jurisdictions more similar to Portola Valley and it was our feeling that this would enable the search to succeed most. The cost proposal was more inclusive as well and I'll turn it over to Rebecca to get into some of those details.
Next slide, please. So Wendy Brown's proposal was 24,900 plus specified expenses, which ranged from 5,500 to 7,900 for a maximum total of 32,800. Baker Tilly's proposal was for 29,500, 29,500 plus expenses and there were different activities included. This slide, sorry, this doesn't look like the final version of her presentation, but we'll work with what we have here. So their costs would have been similar to the extra expenses of Wendy Brown, but on the lower end. So we will request approval for an amount not to exceed 35,000 in the aggregate, just to allow us some flexibility in the case that we need to request additional activities to evaluate potential candidates. Next slide. So for next steps, once the contract is negotiated, we would expect the work to commence by the end of this month. And then our subcommittee would continue to work with Wendy Brown to define the process for gaining input from the community. Key on this is finding some of the important factors that the community considers for our new town manager, as well as helping the firm understand the perspectives of their town council, and our commission and committee members and our staff. We really want to find the ideal town manager for Portola Valley. Next slide. And we want to thank the staff for all their support of our subcommittee efforts. It was quite a challenge working out our schedules and I actually counted, not just for this effort, but 20 meetings last week, of which quite a few were related to this project. And we encourage the public to keep updated on the process and to participate in the open activities that we plan to have, so we can get a lot of input on what an ideal town manager would be. You know, our town is special and we really want to get it right this time. Thanks.
That's it, in terms of what we've done, in terms of next steps, all we're deciding on tonight is whether the council supports the recommendation. There's a lot of detail on the specific process to be followed, a lot of optionality on the panels that we can constitute and surveys that can be conducted to get input from the community on what's important in terms of attributes of a successful town manager. That will all be worked out going forward, but tonight the question is, are we supporting that recommendation? So I'll turn it over to those not on the subcommittee to ask questions, if you have any. So Helen, would you like to start?
Sure, okay. Mary?
I'm just very impressed with your presentation. I think we've gained a lot of experience on this and we're going to get it right this time and we know a lot of the fits falls and I totally support your proposal.
So I was a little confused on the 35K. Was that for Baker Tilly because theirs was kind of a variable or are we saying that even with Wendy Brown, that that number isn't a final? Because there was, what was it, 24, 9 plus?
It was 32, 8 was it? Yeah, so we don't have to, but the idea was there are certain additional things one can add in over the base. We think the base, or I'll speak for myself and Rebecca can address it separately, the base is something that's going to give us a very robust capability, but for example, if we have additional very specific background checks, there might be a line item or two. So we're just looking for a little leeway without having to come back to council, but I think we're not likely to want to use that unless we have a compelling reason. Rebecca, feel free to weigh in.
Yeah, I agree with that. I would not expect to go over about that the most, 32,800. One of the compelling things for Wendy Brown was that she really specified, you know, a lot of the cost for these extra expenses, you know, whether it was the background check, whether it was panels, how many panels they offered, whether it was, kind of blanking here on, oh, on their advertising costs, it was all included in that specified maximum. So that just gave me another level of confidence that we would not be going, would not really need to go over the budget unless for some reason we really felt compelled, for example, to do a much more complex background check, for example, in addition to what they already are planning, which is to work with a former police detective who now runs a business on doing background checks. So I felt very comfortable with what they were offering already in terms of background checks, but you know, if we needed a little bit more perhaps, then, then of course, we might need to ask for a little more, that's why we put in a little bit of leeway, but I felt pretty comfortable with what they were offering, with their base plus expenses, maximum expenses.
Okay, so this is just a little pad on whichever firm we pick, you're just trying to get a little pad to make sure you have some flexibility.
Yeah, we're going to try not to need it.
So then, thank you for your presentation. The question I always ask is, so you've sort of laid out the pros and they sound positive. What are, what were the cons when we were reviewing, like for Wendy Baker?
Oh.
Or Wendy Brown, sorry. Well, maybe for both, but, but, but I mean, given, given it seems like your guy's strong recommendation is to go with Wendy Brown, I mean, what were the cons when you sort of looked at their?
So they're a little apple and orange, frankly. I think if you just look at their histories, Wendy Brown started more in California and Oregon, I believe, and is, is going out from there, so their, their history is based here. Baker Tilly acquired a California-based business, but they were outs, primarily outside, they're very national, looking to develop opportunities in California. I mean, they are here, let's be clear, both have strong experience here, but there was no real downside, I think, to either. It was more, we got a lot of great feedback on both and it was really like, okay, well how does this work for us right now, given our history? That was, I'll just speak for myself, Rebecca, how about you?
I would agree with that. I mean, Baker Tilly is a huge company that has a combination of recruitment as well as management consulting, so that's part of where they draw their, their pool, recruitment pool, is through their management consulting business in a sense. And I felt that Wendy Brown was currently more focused on the West Coast and had a lot of experience in California, especially with some of the smaller jurisdictions that I felt she would be more, more in tune with Portola Valley. And I was, she's also doing currently our town engineer search and they're being pretty thorough about that, so I was impressed with what they produce, their marketing, the marketing materials are good and they just seem to have a very good touch for how they explored the fit with people, whereas Baker Tilly is a much larger company, it would be more like a team, team kind of working on it, so.
Good, thank you.
Thanks. You know, obviously we've got two good proposals. I appreciate my colleagues on the subcommittee, 20 meetings, it's a lot. We are lucky with these two proposals. Other than the monetary questions and on the Baker Tilly, that they were going to renegotiate, that I'm part of the, part of our standard contract, it looked like, there were some renegotiations. But I am curious if Wendy Brown's has the creative partners, because we are in a unique time in our town and trying to find someone, if they're willing to look outside of people with municipal experience, kind of idea? Was that question brought up at all? Obviously, we have a lot of people in town without municipal experience or around the area and I'm curious if that was discussed at all with either firm. I know it's an unusual one and municipal is a pretty specific skillset, but I often think that you could potentially hire from, you know, people outside of municipal experience. So I'm just curious if that was discussed at all.
So we have a lot of ability to impact how broadly they search. I think there, that is something that, like you said, municipal experience is pretty unique and given our situation right now, trying to get the finances right, you know, that was important to make sure they, they have experience with. But we did ask, you know, would they take, you know, suggestions for posting on different types of bulletin boards, things like that, and they seemed open. We didn't, we didn't get into the granular, like, and then you'll do this and then you'll do that, because it's a little early, but if that is something that we want to make as an important item for them, I think we can make that suggestion. Rebecca, did you hear anything different?
No, and I think it was quite dependent on, a lot of focus was about getting community input and getting council member input and getting staff input and getting committee and commission input into our ideal candidate. And if it came back that the desire of the community and everybody kind of was for someone with a lot of municipal experience, then I think that would be where the focus would be. If instead the comments came back and the focus was that we wanted more outside the box, you know, experience, if you will, then, then I'm, I got the impression that they would be quite able to pivot that way and really search some of their, you know, the universities, programs, the, wherever, to bring that. But I do think the town has quite a bit of challenges that we're prepared to meet, but it might benefit us for having, finding a town manager that's experienced with revenue enhancement projects, that's experienced with planning and building projects and housing elements in California, that's experienced with hiring good people, since we have quite a few interim heads. So, you know, I think, I think it comes down to, you know, kind of what the community really feels are the priorities, but.
And the council and the, I mean, I think we're planning on that being a discussion item.
And if I may, Mayor Haskell.
Yeah, please.
In our experience working on the town engineer recruitment, Wendy and her team have been very open about being creative with their recruitment process, so maybe this person doesn't be ideal fit, but here are some great qualities. And that was one of the notes we did make, is if you find somebody in the private sector that is a better fit for our community and they have the qualifications. that is a better fit for our community and they have the qualifications that would make them successful, we've been completely open to that. And she's been open to finding us someone for that.
Great, thank you. So I was definitely leaning towards Wendy Brown. Actually, I was concerned that it would look like it was more expensive, so I would support your recommendation.
Yeah, we are still on questions, but that's a good preview. So unless there's any other questions.
Well, I would, I would ask, that's why the information is a little confusing, the way it was presented here. There, Wendy Brown's not, actually not more expensive, because if you, you look at Wendy Brown as the maximum of 32.8, Baker Tilly is not 29.5. Baker Tilly is 29.5 plus probably four to 5,000. So they're actually probably will fall out a little bit more by about 1,000. So just to correct that information, I know it was confusing, but that's kind of the way each of the proposal was a little bit different, the way they presented their, their costs and stuff. So I just want to make clear that Wendy Brown maybe is at a maximum 32.8, whereas Baker Tilly would probably be more like 33, max 34. So, thank you.
I just wanted to get granular for a second, which was whether they, that you asked about the Graduate School of this, this Career Management Center.
I actually did.
Go ahead, how'd it go?
They're open. They, they said, well, it's not our fault, but.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Trying to leverage past work. All right, so we can turn it over to public comments. I am not seeing anyone in the schoolhouse and I'm not actually seeing anyone. Oh, there's one online here, 7562.
Good evening. Yeah, I, I thank you for the subcommittee to, to the search, but once again, I want you to acknowledge that the residents of Portola Valley, they want accountability and transparency. We don't want a manager with political ideology or who is pursuing his political career, which we have seen. We don't want a manager who is exploiting the system, which we have seen with the last one. So I think you should contact the public comments and, and see what they want. We want a businessman who can run our town council or our town of Portola Valley. I think we are very happy with the interim finance director, with the interim manager, and hopefully you can find a successor, but no person of political ideology and, and career. So hopefully you will consider our, our inputs. A lot of people have been silent and it's not right. We are a very wonderful community and it's time that we have our community back. So hopefully you will work on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we do want the public to participate. We're probably going to have some combination of polls, maybe, maybe some meetings. That has yet to be decided, but if you want that, weigh in during the process because we want to hear it and we want those views. All right, bringing it back, any discussion beyond what we've already done? And if not, we can have a motion.
So I move that we select Wendy Brown and creative partners with a maximum of $35,000.
Second.
Member Flynn?
Hi.
Councilmember Hufte.
Hi.
Councilmember Walter.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Hasko.
Hi.
Motion.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, Corey, for all the work he did pulling together the RFPs and helping coordinate all the work streams. All right, now we are lucky enough to have presentations for our town council committees and we'll go in the order that they were laid out here. First is open space. We're anticipating an update on what the committees have been addressing or maybe planning to address. And, you know, roughly 10 minutes, I'll leave it up to you who's presenting and what order within your committee. So open space first.
Well, first I want to thank the council for this invitation. It's been a few years since you've done this and I've missed them. I've always learned when I'm able to attend these. So Nona and I are going to together share the open space report presentations tonight. I will take the first half and highlight four areas of committee focus. Nona will take the second half with her fantastic slides to offer an on-the-ground look at Dorothy Ford Park in which we've invested the most considerable time. I am going to read this tonight because we're going to try to honor that 10 minutes. The areas of committee focus that I'll be highlighting are open space fund purposes, acquisition and maintenance, open space fund stewardship, a 2025 recommendation, open space governing documents and assembling them, and finally Hawthorns. Of the open space purposes, open space acquisition is at the heart. Seventeen years ago, the committee made its last investment with the town's acquisition of a two and a half acre parcel that anchors Shady Trail at its base. Special thanks go to Bev and Peter Littman for that. Since there's been a quiet spell since, that was until a year ago, when we invested time and energy in the town jewel, Jellic Ranch. Though things did not come together there for us, the process itself was enlivening and here we are just a year later, looking at a 14 acre parcel on top of Skyline, immediately south of Windy Hill, open space and owned by the Fogarty family. It was an ad hoc housing sites committee find that brought it to light, yet it is remarkably well-suited to open space purposes. When we discussed it at our January meeting, the committee expressed great enthusiasm and will consider making a recommendation to the council as soon as March the 6th, our next meeting. So moving on from acquisition, the exciting part, to maintenance. This year, the, the committee increased its role in open space maintenance. We appointed a joint committee, two open space members, Nona Chiariello and Gary Nielsen, who joined two members of conservation to coordinate with public works staff to prioritize maintenance work and timing and record budget and actual expenses. We are in our inaugural year without Howard and believe our coordination will be resource protective for the town. Open space fund stewardship, here's a 2025 recommendation. As stewards, we believe a separate account for the open space fund rather than commingled with the general fund as it has been is appropriate for three reasons. The most important of which is the 2009 Portola Valley Town Attorney drafted a ballot measure R and in her impartial analysis made the representation to voters that, hold on here, if the ballot measure is approved, money collected from this tax levy will be placed in a special town account to fund open space projects. So we think that that's more than a housekeeping item. There's a second reason. The open space fund represents 40% of town funds and is distinct from the general fund. It has very minimal need for liquidity, less than 1% of the total, in fact. So over 99% of the fund could be safely invested at 4.3% return today. Not to do so comes at an opportunity cost to the fund. Lastly, commingling the general and open space funds into one account has contributed to our absence of clarity about fund balances and as well necessitates prorating interest across multiple funds. We think simplicity is good. For all these reasons, we invite this discussion this year. Another satisfying area of work has been assembling the documents of our open space parcels. In response to some genuine confusion about appropriate uses for open space property mid last year, we reached out for our open space grant deeds and conservation easements. Our aim was to access land use agreements and what intentional limits exist for our own and our collective understanding. In November, Springdown's conservation easement came to us, thank you very much, town clerks, and its various restrictions were quite helpful to see clearly. To help keep our future conversations amongst all of us collectively focused and settled to save staff and committee time, we are proceeding with that effort. Being on solid and common footing is a good community investment. Finally, MidPenn's Hawthorns process. Since July 2023, I've been the open space committee representative to the town's ad hoc Hawthorns Committee. And separately, the open space committee has weighed a variety of pros and cons, engaged in lots of discussion with the community and grappled with the conservation easement as interpreted by post and mid Penn. Our October letter goes into more detail than I have time tonight, you have that before you. The committee will continue to monitor Hawthorns and provide a venue for the impressive resident engagement on this subject. So that brings us to Nona, who will complete our report with deserved focus on Dorothy Ford. Thanks for your attention.
Thanks, Betsy. So over the last year, the open space committee has discussed Dorothy Ford Park a lot. And my part of the report is to share with you some of our main conclusions about the open space value of Dorothy Ford Park. A lot of the open space value of Dorothy Ford Park can be seen even from Alpine Road, but you can also see it here in the left aerial image. There are two trails that bikers, joggers, dog walkers, runners use a lot. There is a natural turf baseball field that has been used by Little League for decades. In the middle of Dorothy Ford Park is a remnant of Valley Oak Savannah and it has two very, very old trees that are widely revered in town and they truly are witness trees. There are also some anomalies to Dorothy Ford Park. One of them you can see in the middle is the, the road that leads to the Bridge to Nowhere. And at the very north end, there's a less than two tenths of an acre that is leased to Ladera Oaks. One thing that you can't see on this that you know is there and is really important in terms of open space values is Los Tranquilos Creek. And that's because it's underneath the tree canopies that you see forming a ribbon in the two images. The image on the right is really important because it's 1930 image and it shows the two Valley Oaks nearly as large as they are today, but 90 years ago. To understand better where the creek really is, we looked at bare earth terrain LiDAR. My slides aren't quite keeping up with my laptop here, but they will. Okay. And that's shown in the image here. And we, we found this really helpful because it really clarified how much a part of Dorothy Ford Park, the creek channel is. Riparian corridors are special habitats in California, not only because the state has lost so much of them, but because the riparian woodland that lines the riparian bank protects the creek by holding the bank in place. It protects the species that live in the creek and it protects people who live by the creek. The more we looked at this image, the more we wondered, how long has the creek been like And so we turned to some old maps, the most interesting of which is shown on the left. It's a map from 1897, so it's 125 years old. The map shows what was the svelte track then and was bought by Leland Stanford. You can see the outline of it is the thick black line and the little bulge. My phone. I don't think my microphone is on, so I don't think it's me. Anyway, the, the bulge that's on the left is of course the Stanford wedge. And what I've done is I've blown up the section that's in the red rectangle and you can see that in the middle panel. Again, the thick black line is the property boundary, but you can compare the creek channel the way it was 125 years ago with the way it is today by comparing the, the wavy line beneath the parcel boundary for Dorothy Ford Park in the middle image and in the image at right. And if you take a second to do that, I've superimposed it on both images, so you can compare, you can see that the creek has been stable for more than a century. It was just really remarkable, I think. If you go north from Dorothy Ford Park and you go past into Ladera on Alpine Road, there are a number of places where the riparian woodland has gaps. And if you look at those areas, as you can see in this next slide, again, this is bare earth terrain on the left and then a ground image on the right. You can see there are places where the creek has eroded far enough to the west that it has actually intruded on the road right of way. There are five places where you can see this along that stretch of Alpine Road going north from Dorothy Ford Park up to the 280 on-ramp for 280 South. The image on the right shows one of those examples where it has washed out and there are boards that are reinforcing the roadway. The last message I want to convey about the open space value of Dorothy Ford Park is that it's, it's a link in a long riparian corridor that serves native and sensitive species. In this map at the left, Portola Valley is shown with a white dashed outline and all of the creeks in Portola Valley are shown there and they drain to San Francisco Creek, which drains to the San Francisco Bay. As a result, those creeks could potentially serve as spawning habitat for steelhead trout, for example, which is a federally listed species. But the part of Portola Valley that's sort of more orange there on the, the western half over. My cursor isn't working. The left half that's underneath the Portola Valley label and is somewhat orange, that's not spawning habitat because of the dam at Searsville, which is up in the left corner of the map. Nice. There we go. Okay. Somehow I slipped out of the slideshow. If you can try it again. Okay, let's try that. The portion of the watershed that is in Los, along Los Tranquilos Creek is the Los Tranquilos Creek sub watershed and that's what's shown in this image with a dotted line and in a mustard color. As a result, that's the only part of Portola Valley that is now spawning habitat for steelhead trout. Those three locations that are numbered on Los Tranquilos Creek are monitoring locations or locations where properties have gone in for review proposals. And we know from the studies by Stanford at the site number two, that in good years, there are hundreds of steelhead trout. that in good years, there are hundreds of steelhead trout in Los Tranquilos Creek. Wrapping up, I want to show you a list of the four open space values that I've mentioned here. They're listed on the right. And I want to close with two recommendations. One is that we hope you will protect the creek bank as much as you can and consider expanding the setback from 55 feet to something greater. Currently, the municipal code requires 55-foot setback for a parcel of this size, but other towns are considering bigger setbacks in similar circumstances. The second is that we hope you will help protect the creek by protecting the opposite bank from Dorothy Ford Park by using the 25-foot creek conservation easement that the town holds on the land on the opposite side of the creek. Thanks for putting up with my technical difficulty here, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work from our committee this year.
Thank you very much. This is great work and so much of it and so thoughtful. We'll open up for questions from the committee, or sorry, from the council. I do want to note that I'm gonna hold, unless Catherine tells me otherwise, I'm just gonna hold public comment until all three committees make their presentations. So we can go into questions by the council. Mary?
Thank you, Nona. Lovely as always. The, my question is, the Bridge to Nowhere, on the remnant on the other side, which may is slightly outside of your presentation, is there room there for parking, for example, that would be environmentally sensitive?
So I don't know if you can see where that parcel is on the right map?
Yeah, I can.
Here. And again, I actually, apologies, I thought this was shared as a public comment, this whole document, so you could see it ahead of time, but I'm not sure it got to you, so apologies for that. So that parcel is just over three acres, and you can see that the creek actually meanders considerably, such that there isn't a lot of area to move around in there. There are plans for a house there, as you probably all know. There's a for sale sign at the drive through to the Bridge to Nowhere, and it's all in Santa Clara County. The creek is the county boundary. So I don't know if that answers your question, but there is not a lot of room there.
Even for parking?
Parking for what?
Automobiles.
Or?
No, for.
Can I just give a quick, be the most expensive parking you ever saw?
Okay.
Because it's on the market for a lot of money.
Yeah, the property is listed for 5.9 million right now with nothing on it.
All right. Any other questions?
I just had a small comment.
Are there questions first, since we're going to take public comment on all three presentations later?
I'll turn it into a question.
We can combine.
I'll turn it into a question.
Excellent, okay.
Could you send the presentation in so we could make it part of the public record? And I think we're missing your last slide because the last slide, the last page I had is.
I can speak to an error I made in my hurry.
No, no, yeah, I didn't mean it's an error, I just.
I sent you a prior version of this presentation, so we'll get you the version. In fact, Christine has it and can have it on your desk probably pretty soon.
Yeah, I'd just like to get it into the public record. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it should be in already, but.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, thank you so much, both of you, for the presentation. Betsy, you had mentioned that the last time the Open Space Fund was used was 17 years ago, I think. What about Springdown? Was it not used with open space money?
Fair to that.
Oh, okay.
So Spring, at least, I'm pretty sure about, yeah, I'm sure about that. Springdown, Springdown had two phases. There was the first, there are two parcels, parcel three and four, and I might mix them up, but I think parcel four preceded parcel three, and parcel four closed in 2000, parcel three, I believe, closed five years later-ish.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. And then my second question was the slide that was just here. No, no, I'm sorry. You said, you mentioned something about protecting the other side, and I was just curious why, what was the, I wasn't clear on that.
So the town of Portola Valley holds a conservation easement on the parcel on the other side of the creek, and it pertains to cut and fill, tree removal, and tree planting. And so if the property is developed and if, as seems likely from the documents in the sequinet, that work is needed on the creek, the town of Portola Valley should be monitoring that.
Okay, so the easement's in Santa Clara County, though?
The land is in Santa Clara County, and the easement is from the center line of the creek, 25 feet going towards the Santa Clara side. So it's on the other property, not on San Mateo County.
And how wide is the creek? I mean, how far up from the creek bank top does it actually end up extending?
So it varies. It mostly goes at least to the top of the bank, so any work that was done in the creek. So for example, the plans that are on file right now show a blanket of riprap in a section of the creek. That would be something the town might want to look at.
Okay. Right. Okay. Yeah, and just to mention, that property was sold, I don't know, in the past five years or something for like two and a half million. So it's interesting that they've decided to double it despite the fact that it was, I think the first person who bought it realized it's not very developable, but, but yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
I do actually have a question. Concerning the Measure R, money collected from this tax levy will be placed in a special town account to fund open space projects, right? There's been only a history of acquisition. Is that correct?
That's true, except that we are also doing one-time, one-time capital improvements. When we buy a property, we will bring it up to a certain level. After that, the town was maintaining it, but now we're doing our own maintenance. So those are the, those are the broader areas.
Got it. Okay. And so has the committee decided that they are, that, I'm just curious about the division of, division of labor between the town and the committee for maintenance and operations?
At this moment in time or a year and a half ago?
Both, please.
Well, the town used to cover maintenance. We did one-time-only capital expenditures. There's a long history of conversations with the town about that. And the committee, prior to my joining it, was very strong about these are boundaries, right? You do maintenance, we do acquisition and one-time-only capital improvements. But times change and things change, and you can see the writing on the wall. And so we have embraced, you've embraced maintenance on town-owned properties that are specifically town-owned open space priority properties. The town owns a lot of tiny little ancillary projects that it inherited for various reasons. We don't, we don't consider that open space that falls under our group.
Great. Okay. Has the committee discussed the use of any of the Measure R funds potentially for maintenance and operations in the future?
Well, as I said, we are paying for maintenance. I don't know what you mean by operations, but maintenance we are paying for right now.
Okay.
And.
And out of the Measure R funds?
I mean, it's not like a grab bag, though, so that's why I went into the detail about the, there's a four, and I'll ask Nona to weigh in here. Nona's one of the four members of our subcommittee. The subcommittee gets together with two members from Conservation, and they say these are priority maintenance issues this year. But as you can imagine, when you do something matters quite a bit, right? So mowing any old time of the year doesn't satisfy our purposes, so long as it's, you know, done within a window of time. You know, and some kind of a reasonable budget that is set up beforehand. So that's where the coordination is going to happen, and previously Howard was the point person. So that's where we're going to now be working with, we think, Scott and Justin, or Scott probably, at least until we hear otherwise. Nona, would you add anything to that?
I guess we're not sure who we're supposed to work with, to be honest, but that would be really helpful. I mean, last year we allocated or recommended to allocate 45,000 for the whole handling of Springdown. And the weeding never got done, so we never really understood where the money went. And, you know, there are just some things where, you know, the town was in a really tight position too, so a lot of things can happen. And we're off for making sure that the maintenance gets done and that it gets paid for in an appropriate way. So we're not trying to hold back funds. Just trying to make sure it gets done at the right time and in the right way.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for what you guys are doing.
Yeah, thank you. Any last comments or questions? I guess we can, well, we can, we're taking public comments on all three later, so we can combine them now, I think. Unless there's a lot of other questions, I think we can move on. Yeah. No, no, we can do that.
Okay, comment? Thank you for the presentation on the creek. We are incredibly lucky because it's the county line that it did not get paved over, right? Like Matadora Creek was paved over in Palo Alto. We have an incredibly, we are incredibly lucky to have such a vibrant creek. We also are hoping to get Beaver up watershed because they've been seen down low. So I saw that Beaver was missing from your list.
Oh.
They're not here yet, but they are lower in the watershed, so cross your fingers. Thank you.
There are a number of special status species. I mean, there are wood rats everywhere at Dorothy Ford Park, and there are special status species, but they're more indicative of habitat than really that special in themselves, I suppose.
Other comments? If not, I do want to say this is incredibly helpful, both to understand the hard work, but also to understand areas where our clarification or giving some direction on how we should be working with. You know, keep, keep those questions coming in so we can consider them at the right time. Tonight is not the day to do that, but, but let's be as helpful to you as we can. So let us know when those issues are coming up, and, and we'll have to give some thought to how to get you that through them.
One question that we did get from the public at our last meeting was, how much income does the town get from the lease of the very tip of Dorothy Ford Park to Ladera Oaks?
I do not know the answer to that.
We don't either.
Not much, quote unquote. Okay, not much increased by the CPI. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I mean, I just take a quick opportunity to thank the entirety of our committee, Beth Lipman, Terry Lee, Gary Nielsen, and Carter War. Give them a big hug the next time you see them. And our town treasurer, Nona Giurillo. I don't know how the world operates without her, but we are so lucky to have her here with us and serving on multiple committees.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. We are gonna take a five-minute break, so if we can come back at 9:27, and then we'll have Trails and Paths and Geological Safety. Look forward to those. Thank you. Large gifts. Thank you. Yes, very impressive.
Okay, this is the impressed town council night.
Yeah, incredible, yeah. Beautiful. Thank you. Wow.
Oh my God, there's no, there's no ledger.
Oh, there is. No legend?
I have a legend.
Okay, so are you both presenting, Neon, with your plan? Okay, you give the gifts. Okay.
Oh, great, the legend.
Thank you.
Put under your coat. Oh, no, I, I should be looking at it nine regardless.
Wow, what's this green stuff on my property? Yeah, exactly, that's my house. It's pretty wet there right now.
I think we're working out how to make the presentation work for those online. Give us a minute. Oh, okay. Thank you. I was wondering. I did this. I was wondering where our railroad track was. But this is ours, right there.
I was at the meeting today, and they were not there. They didn't know, not know about it.
Okay, no problem. We'll invite them another time. Christine, are you working out how to? How to present? Okay, thank you.
So because we're waiting and I see that there's technical issues, I'll just give a little introduction. And hopefully, I wasn't planned to give them talk. I'm trying to just help.
Sure.
I'm Bob Ruckey. I'm part of the Geological Safety Committee. I made the map. It's a map. It's a special props, it's a purpose. It is to show the hazards that exist in the town that are related to evacuation, especially if we, and this could be a very important map if there's a wildfire and an earthquake. See, if we had an earthquake, it's possible to have a fire. And then if we had a fire, and then we have to deal with damaged roads, how are we gonna get out of here? This map helps explain that. And to that, I think, you know, are you ready? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Mary.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was Bob Ruckey, if some of you haven't met him. And he is solely responsible for the beautiful map you have in front of you. He's our cartologist, and he's probably put hundreds of hours into this. So it's, it's a work of love, and it's a, it's a wonderful tool for the town to have. Okay, we'll get back to it in a second. Okay. So, yeah, you were talking about the picture. I was distracted there on the, on the screen. And that is Upper Alpine Road. It's about half a mile past Portola Road, and that was what happened in 1906. Will happen again. So we're all. So we're all... I'm glad to hear you talk about evacuation, and we're all concerned about wildfires. But the, you know, wildfire may happen, but a rupture, especially on the San Andreas through town, will happen. We don't know when, but it's going to happen, and it's probably going to look like this again. Except it's going to be worse. I'll show you. Okay, so we'd like to show you, talk about what we've been doing for the last year or so, and what we're planning to do for next year. There it goes. Good.
There's a little lag.
Oh, a lag. Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, so here is our charter. Part of it, objectives. We're an advisory committee. We're a brown act committee. And we advise you. And review the town ordinance's policies and plans and procedures related to geologic hazards, which is interesting. I'd like to come back to this, not today, but another time, and clarify some of this. Maybe possibly expand their role here. But we do consult with the... Or talk to the consulting geologists from Cotton Shires about the geologic maps. Review the town's earthquake preparedness and education program in light of geological hazards. I've never heard of a earthquake preparedness and education program, but we're doing our best to carry out this function. If anyone has ever heard of this, please let me know. Have we had one? This might have been written years ago. And to comment on other... Matters as requested by the town council. Okay. So this is a spreadsheet on the left. That... Let me put this down. Shows basically what we've done, what we plan to do. The things in blue... Don't try to read it. The things in blue are things that are done or essentially done. And the items for '24, '25, this fiscal year, next fiscal year, the items in black are the ones that we have either are in progress or we're planning to do. So... It's a long-term plan. We aligned our objectives or our priorities to the town councils a couple of years ago, when you said that your priorities were safety, resiliency, accountable and transparent government, and long-term planning. So we said, "Yeah, we're geologists. We think long-term anyway, so we do long-term planning." But safety, resilience, and accountability and transparency sound good, so that's what we're doing. Okay, take them in order. Safety. For safety, we're doing basically four things. One is the evacuation. In case of... You don't evacuate for an earthquake necessarily. You evacuate for a wildfire following an earthquake, because wildfire is one of the most common earthquake hazards. You all know that, okay? So we have to be prepared to do that. We're doing research on local hazards. We're writing reports, which are forthcoming. Earthquake preparedness and education, I'll talk about. And safety element, I will say right now. This started in 2022. It started almost three years ago. They work on the new safety plan. It halted completely, fell into a deep black hole. And we'd be absolutely delighted to see it revived. And if it's a matter of funding, my thought is that the initial participants in the safety element, except for the consultant. The consultant gave us a framework and asked each committee to make specific suggestions. Okay, but we were constrained in what we were in our scope, basically. I would love for the committees to be able to get together without a consultant and try to hammer out what they think the safety element really should be, to conform with the spirit of the general plan for the town. There's no spirit in this thing. It's a technical document, so we need to... I think it needs a lot of improvement. Anyway, my thought was perhaps to have committees, probably two people from each committee, about 10 people, get together to talk about the crossover points and the points of commonality, because there are lots of them, and how this... How to think about the safety element, what is safety in the town, rather than just the technical points that we were asked to comment on. And that we can do, I think, by ourselves. And then we would need to bring in the consultant to make sure that the document conforms with all regulations. So that's a thought here. Okay, now, we're at Bob's beautiful map. This is one of the most gorgeous maps I've ever seen. It's also what we call the scary map in the committee. We have lots of maps, but this one is the scary map. If you look at... Just... Just bring out one thing. And I know I've mentioned this before. If you look at... Can you see my cursor? Right here, it says on the road right over there where the fault crosses, Portola Road. We're at town center, right here. There's a... The red dots are where the faults cross, the evacuation runs, right here. And farther toward... It's actually, oops, in Woodside, where Family Farm intersects San Hill Road. And Bob can talk about that one. That's the one that scares him, because it's... The road is likely to be unstable. There's liquefaction there as well as the fault crossing. It's going to be really bad. So we think that if the San Andreas ruptures, Portola Road is going to be either impassable or it'll be so slow that it will be essentially unusable for evacuation. And what that means is that it's essential that Alpine Road be available for evacuation. It's absolutely critical. Alpine Road has some problems, too, but nothing like this. So anything you can do to move the process for improving Alpine Road for evacuation would be really good. Okay, so the map comes with the explanation, the one-page sheet with all the symbols on it, and that's Bob's work also. We worked in collaboration with the Fire District and the EPC. This, the map and the explanation are in an appendix to the evacuation plan for the town that you approved last year. And any specific questions you have on the map, I refer to Bob. Okay. This is just an example of a derivative map, taking the layer of locations of the firegates, the emergency gates only. So there they are. Bob researched this very carefully, and this is probably the most accurate map of the emergency gates anywhere. So I would rely on this before any other map, the emergency gates you've seen. He listed all the locations at the bottom of the map. You don't have a copy. We can get one. But he listed the locations at the bottom, and then he has them located on the map, numbered on the map. And there are other similar maps we can get. For instance, the water tanks. We can do a map of water tanks if you're interested in those. Okay, the other document you have is the report from the committee. And this is... I hope you read it. We put it in your hands physically. I know it's... Well, it's fairly easy reading, but it's frightening. The map is repeated in this document on pages six and seven. And if you wonder what sources Bob used, they're documented in one of the appendices. I think it's B. So this thing is well-researched. And we intend to put the map and this document online on the town webpage. Not sure exactly how, but we will get it done, in which case the links will be live. We aren't in the hard copy, of course. Okay, the report had three conclusions. One is immediately after the earthquake, you have to get the roads clear, period, in case you need the roads for evacuation. You have to be able to take care of the problems in the roads. And I put this particular picture on the... Let me see if it's here. Here it is. On the front page to remind us of what happens when a fault similar to the San Andreas Fault, the same type of ground movement, and about the same magnitude, crosses a paved road. In 1906, the roads weren't paved. You could just fill in the dirt, and, you know, it was easy to fix them within days. Here, we've got chunks, big chunks of asphalt pavement, that are going to be impassable. That's why I say I'm really worried about Portola Road where the fault crosses it. Okay, second conclusion is we have to protect the people who can't evacuate immediately. I know that's been talked about. You have to have safety zones for people to... Wide-open spaces without trees, without buildings, where people can gather if they absolutely can't get out of town. It may be that not everyone can evacuate. It's scary. And the third point is we need to become a seismically resilient community, and I'll go into what we think that means. We thought it would be really helpful to have a seismic vulnerability study for our infrastructure, which includes the roads, utilities. Okay? So we can see exactly where we stand. That's the report. Okay, so another thing we do, this is under safety still, is primary research on our local hazards, and we are really focused on Portola Valley. No one else is doing this. Cotton Shires isn't doing it. They could, but it would cost a fortune. We are doing this. It's well-researched. It's well-documented. And we're not charging for it. We're volunteers. We're looking at some faults that run through town that aren't... That either aren't on the map or aren't completely on the map. And we'll talk to John Wallace from Cotton Shires about these. But we've got research on two faults finished. We've got one to go, and we have to write up the research. Now, Bob brought this up very recently in committee. I guess at last meeting. Flooding potential on Alpine Road. If we're looking at this as an evacuation route, and it's raining, this is not good. So that's something that will come out of the committee probably this year. The other thing we do is we try to read all the research on the local geologic situation to stay current. Okay, here's earthquake preparedness and education. This makes me laugh every time I get to it. But what we're trying to do is a few things. First, we're having speakers. In January, we had the Director of Geosciences from PG&E come speak to us, and he told us about what PG&E had learned from the '89 Womacka earthquake, what they're doing now for seismic preparation for earthquakes, some new techniques, some new research, some new, you know, equipment they have. This is pretty interesting. And then he answered questions for over half an hour. So we had, I think, 35 people attending. It was really well-attended. And that is... The YouTube is on the town website. And I just found out today, Rebecca, we had talked about this. Dawn Smithson, who's the manager of the Bear Gulch Water District. We talked to her last November and asked if she'd be willing to come talk. And she said yes, but then she got too busy because of the LA fires. She just got back to me today, and she said she can speak at our March 10th meeting. So we'll have PG&E, and we'll have water. If we need to, we can do sewer and anything else. And I also have a... We'll have an academic talk on some research that was done down at Sandborne Park, which is about 13 miles down the fault, on the San Andreas Fault itself. And it's, once again, is scary. Okay, for public outreach, which is, I guess, the education part, we're planning to have a series of articles and tips similar to the wildfire tips on the town webpage and PV Forum. Our first came out in January, and that was on what to do before, during, and after an earthquake. It's just supposed to be a simplified version of what could go on for pages and pages. And we'll have more as time goes on. And any maps and reports that come out of the committee will go on... Will be available to the public on the town webpage. Website. Okay, talked about the safety element. We really need to get this done, guys. Okay, second priority, seismic resiliency. And here's how we see seismic resiliency. It would be the ability, Portola Valley, to survive and thrive after a major earthquake that is damaging, damaging earthquake. Okay. My fear is that in this town, while we don't have a large population anyway, a fairly large portion of residents are renters, who would have no need to come back here if their housing is destroyed, probably wouldn't. And then another percentage, fairly large of the population, have second houses, and they could just move away. Maybe they're gone. So that means the town would have possibly less than a critical population to survive. And my fear is that it would be absorbed back into the county. Okay, so what we'd need to be a seismic... To become a seismic resilient community would be to ensure that we meet basic needs, shelter, food, water, medical needs, safety, that we can repair our infrastructure quickly, or that we have infrastructure that is resistant to earthquakes. And there is such things. It's just we don't... But the thing, we don't have any here, as far as I know. And the roads, they include an infrastructure communication, cell phones, maybe landline phones, maybe the town radio. So all that has to be either up and running and working right after an earthquake or running within a very short period of time. We need a government that is there, responsive, is responsive, and really answers the questions of the people. And I don't think we're... Any of us is prepared for this. And we talk about it all the time. We know that's coming. We're not ready. We need strong community bonds to hold us together, to keep us here, to keep us here as a community together. And I said help with reconstruction of the homes, especially businesses. And this can be something as simple as eliminating some of the red tape in building, maybe getting rid of some of the regulations for building. That could happen at the local level. It could happen at the county level. It could happen at the state level. It could happen at the national level. I think we're going to start seeing some of this in LA after the fires. It's going to be interesting to watch. But... And it could involve money at any level, too, so low and slow. Maybe zero-interest loans, low-interest loans to help rebuild, but we will need help. Okay, accountability and transparency. Okay. The town's geologic and... The town's geologic and, and ground movement potential maps are used for land use, are used for planning. Planning department depends on them to be accurate. The last, most recent ones came out in 2017. They were based on updates through 2014 and then another couple that came in in 2017. Town Council approved the maps in November 8th, oh, November 8th of 2017. Those were the most recent. The updating, have, the updating process needs to be transparent and accountable. It's not been so transparent. It's, we can take care of that this time by documenting all the changes and understanding exactly why, why things should be put on the map or taken off the map. And by the way, changes will go in both directions. Some things that are, some places that are considered unbuildable or very difficult to build on right now will be cleared up for building. And other places will have new geologic hazards that weren't known about before. So it'll, it'll go both ways. So we'd like to, the process starts with a meeting between the Cotton Shires geologist, John Wallace, and the, my committee. And I think we can meet with him, I said, spring or summer, probably summer. We'd like to get this started, process started. I was talking to Mr. Lender and we will, we will work this out. The process starts with the geologist and it ends with the committee. It goes through the planning commission in between. Okay. I see this process is really necessary because it needs to be fair to developers. And I think there's a liability for the town if we are doing a lot of building now on land that's never been built on before and we're relying on the old maps. Disgruntled developers who find that, you know, they buy a piece of land and suddenly it's, it's got really bad problems which weren't on the maps before could very well sue the town. I don't want to see that happen. We should just get this done. Okay. So there are a whole bunch of old geotechnical reports from way back that are just lying in boxes. And some of those have really important information. We'd like to scan those. You can volunteer our time. And make digital copies and make those available to everyone. Because right now, they're not, some of them, well, Bob, you said that Cotton Shires has a box of them in their office, which may or may not be duplicated somewhere in the town's archives. We don't know. But these things are just sitting around, the old, old reports, and they are important. We need to, need to keep the history. And for transparency, as I said, any, anything we produce will be transparent and will be available to the public. Okay. So if there's any money for budget at all this next fiscal year, this is an overestimate. I just, just talked to Finance Director. I think it's going to take a very long meeting to hash out all the, all the changes to the map. I spoke briefly with the, with John Wallace and he said he has a whole list of things. And we have some lists, some things we need to discuss with him. So it's going to take a while. But the hourly rate apparently is very favorable. So it's going to be way under my estimate of $2,000 to $3,000. The other thing is that Bob has been bearing the cost of copying. A large format printing is expensive, even if you do it at home. This morning, he had to run out and buy a new ink cartridge, get these done. So I'd like to have some money available to, to be able to reimburse for printing. Just that and get the meeting going. And maybe the meeting doesn't even, meeting for updating maps doesn't even belong in our budget. I don't know. But just, that's our best guess. Okay. So thank you very much for letting us show and tell.
Thank you for all the work you obviously put into this presentation. We'll open it up for questions. Rebecca, do you have any?
I had a couple. What are your recommendations for the fire gates? In terms of evacuation or?
First, use the update that's in our report because the other map, I mean, that motivation to make that map that's in the report or was on the presentation is the existing map is just incredibly wrong. It's got all kinds of errors. And so I was just frustrated. Kept seeing all these errors. It's like, well, let's make it right. So we did. So let's use that. I'm not really answering your question, what about the fire gates?
Well, they're locked. The keys are not necessarily available to the community that lives next to them that in the event of a wildfire needs to get out within a minute, not wait 10 minutes for the fire department come from the other end of town to unlock them or find the SERP or whatever it's called now, the captain of the neighborhood to open them. So I'm just wondering why they're even locked. I mean, are we, are we creating a solution for a problem that doesn't exist? I mean, why, I mean, it's okay to have a gate, but why do we have it locked? You know? So I'm just, from, from perspective of, you know, an evacuation, I'm just, I don't really understand that concept.
I'll try to give you three really quick answers. One, I hope that the locks can be broken with bolt cutters. Don't have a key and it's an emergency, I hope it's okay to take the lock off. Two, we're not, we're geologists. We're not public safety people, so we're not exactly experts on that. Last point is on the map, we have symbols of where faults cross roads. You saw the photograph on the front of the report. I have a proposal that I have no idea because I'm not an expert if this proposal is sound. But if we had, say, a big pile of crushed gray rock and we just put the gray rock right on top of the damaged road, maybe it's possible to make the road somewhat usable until it's properly repaired. If you don't do that, then you have to wait for somebody with the proper equipment to come and fix the road. Seems like we may want to be able to do things a little, not perfectly, but just make it usable. Is that, does that work? I have no idea if that works, but I'm throwing it out there. I hope that it takes some life. If it doesn't work, then don't do it. If it does work, then please let's consider it. Those are my reactions to your question.
And my second question was a more geology-based one. So there's the green areas, the wavy green is listed as moderate susceptibility to liquefaction. So I'm just curious, I noticed all the town center falls into that area as well as a lot of along Portola Road, some of the areas that I know the ad hoc committee is considering, like the Village Square area for housing. So is it okay to build housing with various, you know, building code restrictions? Or is it just not okay to build at all in that kind of area?
If you are in a, if you're looking at a parcel in an area that is on the state map, an area of liquid faction susceptibility, then you will have to drill boreholes and prove that it's not. And there are, there's, there are specific physical tests you do on the, on the cores you extract from the boreholes. Okay. So it's a well, well-understood procedure. And so maybe, maybe not. You, you do the boreholes before you buy the land?
Just to overlay on that, based on my experience on the planning commission, when a new development is presented, then the town geologist will look at that and make a recommendation based on the categorization, which can, from my point of view, be very confusing. But it's not that you can't build. It's how much is it going to take to build there and what, what does the geologist recommend? But, but I don't think you all get involved in specific sites, right? You're more general support for the town's safety and geology.
But if there is a specific parcel, I mean, just, you know, it's a general answer to the question, no one's going to let you build unless the land is appropriate.
Or can be made.
Can be made, yeah. There are things you could do for liquefiable land. You can take out, you know, if you have a liquefiable layer close to the surface, you can remove it and, and replace it with something that's going to be stable, for instance. But it's expensive. It's really expensive.
Other question? Our big fear, yeah, that's it for me. Thank you. This was just amazing.
I'd like to just address that last question quickly, I hope. Liquification, there are, has, the liquid faction part of the map, that research came from the state of California. And one thing that's not been brought up, but this map is different than the town's official maps. That seems odd, but we built the map on a specific reason. We weren't having planning for building in mind. We built this for evacuation. We use the criteria of, do we know that there's a fault? And if you turn it around, if we knew that there was a fault and we just kept it quiet and didn't let anybody know, that's wrong. So we should know about that. We're trying to put that information out there. What's really going to happen? I think everybody's going to get an education. That includes me and everybody else who thinks that they know what they're doing. It's just arrogant to say, oh, no, no, we've got it figured out. No, Mother Nature is going to give us an education and it will be an interesting, interesting one. But we are trying to give the information so that people can figure out what do they do? There's just an example, on the map, there's some scary symbols around the upper part of Alpine Road. The people who live there can essentially say, if you have to depend on that part of the road, think of that part of the road as being unavailable. Now go figure out what you're going to do about it. We don't have all the answers, but you know, that's the kind of, one of the things that we would like to do this year is make a follow-on report that goes with the map, talks about each neighborhood. So yeah, here's this map. It's nice and colorful, but what about the information that's on there? What do you need to know? You live in, say, Santa Maria. What's the story about when, if you live up there? If you live up on Los Trancos Road, there's another story for them. There should be a description to help the people figure out what they're going to do. So I'm sorry for taking a lot of time, but.
That's fine. Mary, do you have questions?
No, I'm, I'm really familiar with it and I, am I allowed to make a comment?
Sure. No, we're, we're taking.
Okay.
Public, well, I'd rather you hold until we have public comment and then we'll.
I have no choice about it.
Yeah, just questions. Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
So I guess if we're only doing questions, my, my question would be, you talked about this evacuation gate map, but I don't see it in any of the material we got.
I understand.
It's not in the back of the report.
It's not?
The gate?
Yeah, the gate.
The two maps that you put up that were a subset of the, of the report.
So if, you know, if you could just send it to us later, Paul.
That'd be, sure.
Six and seven?
Six and seven.
Yeah.
Right. But the picture that they showed, I mean, it showed 15 gates or whatever and it.
The main point that we're trying to make with that map.
Oh, no, no, that's not, that's not in, that's not in the, the document.
Right. But that's the map of the gates. So if we could just get a copy, that would be great.
Yeah. One takeaway of this is that all of this was done in the final software, it was Adobe Illustrator, which is, those are familiar with this, got layers. You can turn the layers on and off and how you can figure out, turn on one layer and turn off others, you can turn things into a different map. The map that was up on the screen that was the gate map actually came from the same map that made this big map. So we can, we can change things around.
Yeah, if you'd like a map of the fire gates, we can give you a map of the fire gates.
Right. Because I mean, the nice thing what you showed is it wasn't just a map, it was a map with a legend on the bottom, which is where all those gates were.
Yeah, if you could share that, that would be great.
That'd be useful because obviously that wants to be updated in our evacuation plan.
Okay. Word about this map and that this, we took the conservative approach and put on potential hazards. It's not the case that in any earthquake, all of these things are going to happen. All the liquefaction, all the faults are going to rupture. There are lots of faults other than the San Andreas and landslides. There were landslides on here too. It's not all going to happen. In any one earthquake, some of it will happen and we don't know what exactly. So.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, we may benefit from the, the gates to inform a different committee's help looking at the, a different aspect of the safety element. So if we could just get, get a copy of the gate map, that would be great. And I'm sure this will be an ongoing dialogue on a lot of different points.
We can send digital copies pretty easily.
That'd be great.
It's big. It's like 17, 18 megs.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's, there's a lot in here.
Maybe send it to the town and then they can figure out how to work with us to get it. I don't want to take people's memory.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Just a link, just a link to a drive.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. So if there's no other questions, let's go to public comment. And there's only, there's no one here. And we'll have a discussion related to what you're, you've presented in a minute. We have two hands raised in the public. So first, is Rena comment, please?
Thank you for taking my comment. Thank you, both of the committees to, for your presentations. My question for both committees is what do you need? Have you costed out what you need to move forward with the safety plan, with the open space to secure those properties? If you could let us know how much you think it's going to cost, if you've done an assessment on the cost or what other resources you need, please share that with us. Thank you for all that you do.
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, sorry, 7563.
Great. Thank you very much, Caroline Vertonghen. Obviously, there's one committee, President Pat, who was not able to share their presentation. I really appreciate what these residents have done. I have seen Nona going, taking pictures in the rain. I hope this town council really appreciates what these volunteers are doing. We're not paid. We really appreciate this town. We will do everything to protect this town. And it's time the town council understands that we're tired of paying consulting fees for consultants who don't appreciate the general plan, who don't appreciate the goals and the incentives for this town. So really, you have to start changing your focus for the interim finance director, for the interim planning, the manager, I apologize. You have to understand the plan that we submitted to ACD was faulted. And now we have all these committees who have to put extra effort in to confirm with you why this plan was faulted. We gave town council, the previous town council, an opportunity to change the document and they didn't, they refused to. Now that town council is gone, the attorney is gone. And I hope you understand why the people of Portola Valley are so frustrated. We continue to put our time and effort in place to restore our community. And I hope you will understand how important our general plan is and how important the time and efforts are of every volunteer in our committee. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands, either online or in the schoolhouse. So we can bring it back for a discussion among the committee, sorry, the council, I keep doing that. All right. Comments, please? Mary, do you have any?
Well, it's very impressive. And I think this committee is really getting some traction, geology, the safety in particular. And I really, I think you feel our appreciation. I hope you feel our appreciation. The one thing I, I picked out of this that I hadn't really thought about was the whole shelter in place deal. The last time we had an earthquake, it was pretty phenomenal. The town was completely shut down. There was no electricity. There was no nothing. And there was no community, basically, as far as I could tell. It was, everybody turned on their generators and they isolated. Nobody came together. So what I got out of, the new thing I got out of it was that there should be a shelter of some sort. There should be a place where you can go to offer your help. I put on my backpack with my stethoscope and went around the neighborhood and nobody opened their doors. It was really, really eye-opening how isolated we are as a community in an emergency. So the shelter idea is somewhat brilliant and not something we were doing. I just was with the emergency. I just was with the emergency, Greg has done this for years, so he knows all about it, but the Emergency Management Council in San Mateo County. And I think actually we're way ahead of a lot of people on both, a lot of towns, on both evacuation, but certainly on our geologic safety and a lot on our fire mitigation. We're, we're well ahead of everybody else, which is kind of scary because that doesn't mean, that means evacuating is not exactly available because we're, we may be the best of, of the other alternatives. So I thought it was very interesting and very well done. Thank you.
So thank you for the presentation. I think this map's great. I think anytime you can look at potential hazards, that's a good thing. I do think we need to be careful to separate out potential hazards from known hazards. So as we go through this from a planning for evacuation, I think it's really useful. And when we start talking about building and stuff, then I think we need to be careful how we sort of integrate this in. Overall, the three recommendations I think are great. I'd love to see us sort of try to drill down one level and think about solutions. I mean, your solution about, you know, can we have some just base rock and a loader that we could basically, I mean, those are the kind of thing.
Fire it up.
And the other thing is some notion of rough costs. Because I mean, obviously, you know, safety is a little bit like insurance. You know, you can pay sort of an infinite amount and you get admetively closer to safety, but you never actually get there. And so I think we're going to need, as we look through this, is to really think about, you know, where can we get the sort of biggest bang for our buck when we look at the different, you know, both recommendations and sort of ways to mitigate, in a sense, if you will, those recommendations. So, so I love the idea of having a rapid response crew. I think that's great. I think figuring out what a seismic study means, like how big is that? Because I imagine that could be anywhere between thirty thousand and three hundred thousand dollars or something. So trying to understand sort of what the scope of it is and what we would get back, I think that would be really valuable. So thank you.
Helen?
So, thank you so much. This was, I learned a lot tonight, so thank you. I really liked your idea of the committees meeting together. You know, it's so important. Consultants bring expertise, but they don't bring knowledge of the local situations. And we need the committees to ground truth, right? And really make sure that the plan would work for our community. So I absolutely support the proposal of having joint sessions for the committees or subcommittees or some, something to help ground truth. I believe, Mark, I think you had said that there is the possibility of getting the safety element done within six to twelve months, depending on funding and other things. But there is, you know, we are worried. I think everyone on this body is once, you know, safety is the number one thing a government can do. So we, so we, it sounds like we've all been pushing Mark on this issue separately and individually. And so it's, it's of concern and we're, it's apparently it will be, hopefully, we'll have, I don't know, completely done or a rough draft in six to twelve months, so. But trying to move it along. So thank you for what you guys are doing.
We're very fortunate to have people that are so thoughtful, educated, experienced and willing to put in a lot of work, especially for free. We like that. And we're sorry about you incurring costs for copying, so we can take that back and, and talk about the finances. But what you gave us in terms of the costing out for a meeting with the geologists, that's helpful. Anything else as you continue your discussions, as Craig says, to help us put a frame around something or to tell us to work with Tony to, to kind of figure out how we can put a framework for cost together. I don't want to put the burden on you to be finance experts, but, but working with us to help us ask those questions and figure out how to get that information. We'll, we'll be in touch on how to do that, but it's important to do that. Centers between the committees, a lot of what you're raising overlaps with wildfire preparedness and the evacuation committee. So actually having you all socialize the issues, you're, you're talking about very similar subject matter from different perspectives. So I do think having you, some subcommittee mechanism, we can, we can think about what that looks like in connection with starting to make progress on the safety issues, as others have said tonight. But, you know, we, we will be back. We may come back and ask you to refine some things. And I know it's always you're, you're going to be there to, to help us understand things more. So thank you. I, I don't have anything else other than to really truly thank you for everything you did. All right. Yes? You have to use the mic and it, make it work because it's getting late.
Recently, there was an earthquake in Vanuatu. It was very well documented. There was a lesson there that is important for everybody on this town council. After the earthquake, there's the big event, but the earth kept quaking for days. What happens is that nobody, not, not nobody, many people did not want to sleep in their homes. People gravitated to fields and they camped out. Some had tents, some didn't. They created their own tents. That will happen here. We cannot legislate that you are not allowed to do it. You cannot make any kind of ruling that you cannot do it. This is going to happen. People will go to our fields and they will camp out until the earth stops having aftershocks. It could take a month. The people, when they sleep out on our fields, are going to have to do something in the night. There's a health issue. The simplest solution is to dig a trench and that's what we've done for centuries when we've had wars and you've had armies go across the fields. But there's going to be, this is the big takeaway. People are going to be sleeping on our fields and they're going to have to do something in the middle of the night. And that's going to happen and you cannot say that you're not allowed to do it because people are going to do it. Thank you, Pete Ryan.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Could I make a comment myself?
All right, yeah, I do want to, feel free, but I want to wrap up.
No, you missed me as you went around, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Rebecca. I thought, I thought we didn't, but that's my bad.
It's okay. I just wanted to say on behalf of all of us, and we've all kind of said this, that the town council appreciates so much all of your efforts and your expertise. I don't think there's a single person in the whole community that doesn't appreciate what our volunteers do. And I just want to reiterate that. And I also, and I've had a long talk with Nan earlier this week or last week. I think the idea of the joint safety committee is going to be key as we start to, you know, finish the safety element and tie in all of the loose activities that are happening throughout our town with all our agencies that participate, all the utilities. Everybody's involved in, in some aspect of doing safety and evacuation and planning. And I think it'll be critical that we create, you know, a locus for collecting all those little bits to make sure that we are covering all our bases, if you will. And I think we will absolutely need the expertise of our committees as we finish the safety element. And perhaps, Mark, you had sent out information that was in response to my request and I don't know at what point you'll be able to communicate that to the town. You had sent out a quick memo to the council. I'm not, I would love to have that information get out to the town sooner.
It'll go out probably tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
Let's not get off agenda just to make sure we're focused.
Well, they were asking a lot about the safety element and we have, the town staff has done, spent quite a bit of time the past week collecting information about what it will take to finish it. So I just want to make sure that gets out there. And then I think we also as a town need to discuss sort of discretionary funding for small, small expenses. And then finally, I just want to reiterate kind of what, what has been brought up here. I'm sure everybody's aware that there's been thirteen thousand, I think, earthquakes around the island of Santorini in the past couple of weeks. Eleven thousand people have left that island recently, fleeing it because they're, they don't know if it's going to be another, you know, seven point whatever that's going to happen or if there's going to be another massive volcano, which luckily we don't have to deal with that so much that I'm aware of. But, you know, it's, it's an issue and I'm so grateful that you have put together all this information about, you know, potential risks and as well as, you know, the, the open space in terms of the, you know, our creeks and our wildlife that will be involved. So I really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We enjoyed the presentation. We look forward to following up. Next and last on our agenda is the subcommittee and liaison reports. If you've already submitted the report in writing, there's no need to reiterate. But for anybody who hasn't submitted a report, if there's a verbal download on something that's urgent, feel free. Yeah, okay, Craig first and then then Helen.
And I guess it's, so I have one question before I start and then I've got a couple of comments on the... So on a couple of these reports, I mean, there are a lot of potential action items and other requests. How are these going to move forward?
We're... Yeah, we, we have to decide, we can talk with Mark and staff and figure out. I don't think tonight was intended to create solutions to all of the committee issues. So my suggestion is that we have discussions with the town manager and align the various items we've commented on with what's already agendized, what is going to be agendized because it's consistent with our priorities and, you know, what we need from the committees in terms of projections on budget if, to allow us to make suggestions on that. But that, we're not trying to solve them tonight.
And I'm not trying to solve them either. So my, I, so the process, so I think what I heard is the process is when issues are raised in council members' reports, the town manager will review them and potentially get them in line to get onto an agenda. Is that, I understood correctly?
I, I think that's a bit broader than I was focused on. I was focused on the discussions we've had this evening and you're talking about general subcommittee reports.
Well, I'm trying, if you look at, we're, we're on subcommittee reports right now.
Yeah, I know that.
I'm speaking to that where there's, there are a bunch of items buried in these things, but I want to make sure move forward. Again, I'm not trying to move them forward tonight. So it sounds like if the town manager will review them and then make sure they can work with the council member who brought them up or they can work with the mayor and vice mayor, but so that we get them on an agenda, that's...
Well, I don't think we, we have a process that says if there's an issue that's arising, it necessarily has to be agendized for the town council. So I'm not quite sure what you're asking. These are committee reports to keep the council updated. And so I would suggest that if council members want to bring things forward, that they, they can work with the town manager to see if it's agendized because it's consistent with a priority that we've articulated or whether it needs to be separately followed up on. Or it could be something staff can just take care of.
Okay, so we're saying the process is it's up to the individual council member. I mean, I'm just reading like, if you, if you look at the emergency preparedness one, it's need council direction on this, subcommittee of the council to do something else. So somehow this needs to get done. So I, I just was asking just strictly a process question. So I think what I'm hearing you say is it's Helen's responsibility to talk to the town manager for the things that should be, should, that need council direction. Is that right?
A lot of this will be funneled into that study session on March 12.
And I also have follow-up, like I have follow-ups to this and it, we have a safety issue in town right now. For instance, I had talked to Rebecca about some of these items, but you and I are on the safety commission. So because of the Brown commissions, or committees, excuse me, so because of the Brown Act, I can't talk to you about it like off the, like we have a safety issue with that that I, right?
Well, you can't talk to Rebecca and me, you can talk to me.
Well, but I had already talked to Rebecca.
So what's the concern? I think staff typically helps us vet process for raising an issue that a town council number may want to raise. So I would, because that helps with the Brown Act.
Right. So for instance, the EOC question that the committee had, I actually did check with Mark and we do have an EOC structure already in town with staff, right? So for instance, so that's taken care of, for instance. The problem with the radio, I am hoping that staff will work with Woodside Fire District. I also talked to Mark about that at our weekly meeting, that then the radio will be housed actually at the fire station because there's someone there twenty-four hours.
So I want to be really careful that this not get to substance unless it's agendized. So I do encourage every, if you're making a report and you're raising questions and you want to bring it to council, which is the right thing to do substantively, let's work with Mark so he can help us with Brown, Brown Act issues to make sure it gets, gets handled in the appropriate way. And it's either he's going to agendize it because it's consistent with our priorities or it's not requiring town council input, like maybe the staff can help work it out or it's something new and a colleagues memo needs to be written. But I think they need to help us given our constraints. We can't talk about something substantively that's not agendized properly.
Right, but I mean, for instance, like do you want me to, do you want us to report out, because I worked with staff on these two topics, and then to report out to council to, to say like that this is, staff knows about this and is working on it, for instance?
Well, these are supposed to be just reports about what happened at the meeting. It's not supposed to be moving it forward to the next action item. That's how I've always read these. So that's almost doing more than historically we've done. The, the committee reports are just, they raise these questions, period. What you do with that as a council member, you have a path forward. But I think starting to get to, and here's what we're doing, gets beyond what a committee report is supposed to be doing. And feel free, Catherine, if you've got a better way of framing it up for the Brown Act issues, but I, I think we've got to be focused on what we're supposed to be doing here. We're not solving all these problems. We're, we're socializing them and then there's nothing at all to prevent a town council member from progressing it with staff and when the appropriate time comes. And if you are worried someone's duplicating the efforts, I would think staff can tell you that, like in some level. But Catherine, any best practices?
Yeah, I don't have any, I think the way you framed it is, is there are several pathways forward. All right. My comment about that would be that if there's progress on some of these action items, I would want that publicized by the staff, either in the weekly newsletter or whatever. And then I guess the other thing in terms of the Brown Act, because the colleagues memo system is still in flux in terms of whether it works. In an ideal world, those colleague memos would just be stuck at the end of every agenda or somehow publicized so that then that releases council members from their Brown Act relationship and then new Brown Act relationships can be created because the information's public. So somehow we need to figure, get around that one.
Well, again, I, if we want to revisit process substantively, we can take that up in a future meeting. But right now, I'm just looking for wrapping this up on receiving the committee reports. So do we have any committee reports?
I do.
Okay.
That was part two, so thank you. I just wanted to be clear to the public when they read this, sort of what the process is, what the next step is. That was my goal. It's, it's pretty... So from a safety point of view, I've had several meetings in the last week, so I couldn't get them into the packet. I met with the chief of Woodside Fire, talked about a variety of issues, but the ones that are sort of most substantial is the LRA, which is the local area fire maps. They're now due out on the 24th. I mean, they've actually published...
Of February.
Of February, yes. They've actually published it. So we'll see, but this is the first time I've actually seen a flyer saying Bay Area Maps, 24th of February. So that's, I think, good news because this is something we've been waiting for, for I mean, literally years and it's, it's going to impact our community. So I think that's important. The other thing is the chief is willing to give us quarterly updates, so I think we should make sure that we schedule that just to keep a close relationship with the district. And then I also have talked with Dawn Smithson also about a presentation, so I think we're going to have to coordinate whether we do a townwide or a geologic one, but...
Who's that?
Dawn Smithson is...
Oh, Dawn, okay, sorry. Oh, Dawn, okay, sorry.
Cow Water.
C-A-W-N. And she's the, I don't know if she's director, she, she's responsible. Yeah, sorry. She's responsible for Bear Golds. She, she, she's in charge of the Bear Golds Water District, which is the water, the Cow Water District for us. And so I think we have an opportunity for presentation. I think we also have an opportunity for communication infrastructure. So I'm going to set up a meeting with her probably in two weeks to start that discussion. And then the last thing is this rain that's outside is scheduled to be what they call an AR3, which is an atmospheric, atmospheric river three, and it's a scale of one to five. So three's kind of in the middle. Three is right where you're starting to tip between it's good rain and it starts to be hazardous rain. CERT is on the radios tonight, so that's good. And the other thing I'd say is last Saturday, CERT had a meeting out here at the trailers to basically practice an activation. So all that, I think, is good news for the, for the town.
Thank you. All right, next.
Yep. Follow-up on Craig at emergency preparedness, the Cal Fire Hazard Maps that's coming out, they're going to be looking for 30 days of public outreach as well, is what they said at emergency preparedness. Portola Valley School District, they did, the board approved the fencing contractor and they plan to, to begin installation this summer. So that happened a day or two ago.
The fencing.
The fencing, the eight, there is eight-foot fencing, perimeter fencing around the school, schools, plural. There is a San Mateo County Transportation Authority grant for crosswalks successfully, and they actually, the installation for the grant, there was some concern that it was not happening, but the reality is, thank you staff, it is, installation is starting in two weeks. And that's your measure W and measure A, sales tax monies at work. And then BikePed, they are recommending to council a temporary sign at Golden Oak and Alpine Inn to block parking. They took a vote on that. And they also, Mary, they want me to check in with you about the Highway 35, which is a Caltrans state highway, privately funded safety improvements. And that's my report.
Great. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Well, just to note that Craig and I are the subcommittee on that.
Oh, okay.
On the skyline.
Great.
Thing, so there, there's a Brown Act problem right there.
Okay. Not yet.
Yes, sorry. I, I went to, I'm, I feel it's my fault that trails are not here today because I didn't put it together that they were not, they were not aware that they were going to be presenting. But I was at their meeting this morning. And I'd say the most, the only emergency part of their meeting was that the chairman encountered somebody who had an open flame on Coleman Ridge. And the discussion occurred that we should mark the trails for no smoking, no open fires. Because this is, this is something we're willing to have a sign for. You may not like signs, but this one we, we don't want to have unnoticed. So that, other than that, their work was mostly around trying to figure out how they were going to relate to the fundraising part of, of their challenges. And then I went to the emergency management, the intro of, to the ground, the, for the county emergency management council, emergency. Okay, I think it's changed its name now.
Okay.
Anyway, whatever it is, I needed orientation. I got my orientation and I was impressed that they were impressed by us. That was the only thing that I was impressed by. So, and, and we actually have something to offer to them because there's room for improvement out there. Wherever we're evacuating to, we better check it out.
Okay. All right. Is that it? I attended an ASCC meeting a few weeks ago, but it was a very specific issue on a site, so there's nothing really relevant to the community at large on that. All right.
Since you bring it up, I guess I'll add, I was at the last ASCC meeting, it just happened. And they are creating a subcommittee to look into, working with Terrence, a voluntary meeting to allow applicants to get involved early in the process so that they don't end up spending a lot of money and then getting to the point where they go, oh, well, what about this, which is going to now change your entire plan and cost a lot of money. So they're in the process of trying to, you know, move something forward. But the, the general understanding is it will be voluntary, but I think it would be a very strong addition and help applicants.
Good. Lots of work going on. Thank you all. I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, thank you, Catherine. Not, can you retract your?
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
All right, well, we'll consider public comment. I see no hands in the schoolhouse and I see no hands online. So now we can have that.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right.